All right, settle down. Y'all getting out of control out there a little bit. Okay, October 20, 2014, an Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge allegiance. Okay. Heavenly Father, once again, we're before you and the people. Asking to do the best we can for the people of Anaronda County. In the name of Father, and of Son, and of Holy Spirit, Jesus Christ's name. Amen. Okay, what we're gonna do is I want to call up my Eagle Scout. Tommy, come on up here and take that mic and lead us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got quite an interesting night tonight. This oughta be a good one. First thing we're gonna start off with is I have an award for one of our Eagle Scouts, This is quite an interesting story here because I was out banging on doors. Hopefully, some of you folks like me and reelect me. So in any case, the mom got a little card there and she called me up at the beginning of the day and she said, "Councilman, my son is getting an Eagle Scout award. Would you please come out and give him a citation?" Sadly to say, the only politicians that showed up was myself and Ron Bateman. A whole other ones were invited. But I tell you how I feel about Eagle Scouts. I think that's the first step of a man. If they do that thing as far as an Eagle Scout, they have accomplished something seriously great. And I think in an Eagle Scout, anytime a young man hits that spot, he'd be rewarded, at least given a citation for the people. So, buddy. "In recognition of his adherence to the ideals of the Boy Scouts in America's leadership, community service, and personal integrity, earning his Eagle Scout rank by completing all requirements, our sincere best wishes for continuous success in all his life pursuits." And congratulations, my friend, and behalf of myself and the entire council and all the people of Anaronda County. Good job. It gets a little bit better because Tommy is looking to join the DNR police. And if you look at him, I think he'd be a great DNR police. What do you folks think, huh? Yeah?
Mr. Chair, do you know what his Eagle project was by any chance?
Ask him.
This is the best part. This is the best part. Welcome to the flock.
Thanks. I did a meditation guard at Church of Ascension in Baltimore.
In Baltimore, okay. Fantastic, fantastic. Congratulations to you.
Good job. And interesting enough, Mr. Jones is also an Eagle Scout. So that's a good thing. I wish I'd have stuck and stayed for the big pay, but I just didn't. I think I made it to the Weeblos or whatever it's called, or Weblos. Yeah, whatever, something like that. But I just didn't make it. We didn't have a strong pack. Our pack was 717, but it just didn't have great leaders like Tommy's people do, and that's what's important. Okay, second point of business I want to talk about too is while on the subject of the Eagle Scout, I'd like to remark on the passing of a great statesman, Mr. John McCarty. Mr. Cardy passed on March 23, 2014. He hosted the Boy Scouts, okay, troop number 550, in Luthingham for decades. I would like to thank him posthumously for his outstanding contributions to the Boy Scouts, both here and abroad. To his wife Betty, who was always at his side, we offer our sincere sympathies of his loss of her husband. So if we just take a moment and soliden prayer. Thank you so much, Mr. Cardy, McCarty. Let your soul rest in peace. Thank you for everything. Okay. Now, let's see. Let's make this official. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is John Grasso. On behalf of myself, my staff, and the entire council, but most of all, on behalf of the people of Anaronda County, we'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. And I sincerely hope and trust that you find it a very informative and amusing meeting. Okay, Madam Secretary, you want to read the ethics statement, please?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject that is not on the printed agenda? And where's our regulars? Okay, got it. But we have Ms. Johnson, who is the senior speaker. That's correct. Good evening, Ms. Johnson. I see we're with the toilet paper rollers again, once again.
Well, I wouldn't want you to forget.
Amen.
Whenever you see a roll of toilet paper, you remember about septic systems and how they work. You know, if the hole is where the water is, but it seeps outward. And so, I just wanted to remind you because I thought you might forget. I only brought four because last time, a lot of you didn't seem to want my contributions. I did.
Keep it under 25, okay? Go ahead. $25.
This was, this four-pack was a dollar.
You're a good shaker.
Okay, yes, I got them on sale. Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I did want to remind you all that you've heard about the removal of Judge Robert, oh, shoot. Anyway, there was a judge who was removed from the bench because he ordered the police officer in the courtroom to activate a stun cuff, which was a very serious, no, I mean, it's a serious thing to do. You know, if he doesn't like the way the defendant is behaving, he has the option of ordering or determining that the defendant is in contempt. Well, that's sort of done because, in one sense, because Judge Nally, N-A-L-L-E-Y, rhymes with alley. Judge Nally was removed, but there is a videotape that a lot of us are very interested in seeing. And so, there are people who are trying to obtain, and I wanted to make sure that people knew about that. There has been a discussion about plaques, and Mr. Grasso offered to contribute to my, you know, spending more money to do yet another survey. This is the one from 2003. This, I've got one that isn't colored. Basically, I colored it in to color-code it. The red is the road. I own it. It's undisputable that I own it. Oh, no.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Well, just like in the play, The Fantastic, you buy a radish, you get a radish. I bought a road. I don't want my neighbors dumping their tenants' human waste into my land. And I, you know, and I can't understand why you would think that I would want that, even for the purpose of renting it and making money, you know?
All right, Ms. Johnson, I gotta, we gotta summarize. We gotta be done with it because we're gonna be here until 12:00, 1 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you, sir. So, when you buy a piece of land, it's your piece of land. And other people should not be trespassing on it, and they need your help. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Okay, let's see, we have a sign-up sheet here. So excuse me if I butcher your name a little bit, but it's all done in love, okay? Let's see, Mr. Kawasi? Come on down, please. Did you folks represent designated? Did you get up and speak, or does everybody need to go up and say something? The ones that are on the sign-up sheet?
We have three different testaments that will be joining.
Okay, so I'm gonna go down the list here, right? Yeah, well, let's bring up the third person. We've got another. Okay. All right, let's see, Sylvia Quantala?
This is one of the adults, and she will give her first base for our time.
All right, I'm gonna keep going. Who is the names it needs?
This is Christopher Hernandez.
Okay, go ahead, young man. Fire away.
Good evening, County Council members. My name is Christopher Hernandez, and I'm a resident of Annapolis. I come concerned as a former student from Tyler Heights Elementary School. Tyler Heights was my home school in 2006, when I began kindergarten. It has changed so much then. For example, in 4th grade during lunchtime, I was in band class on the stage and often was disrupted and slowly that class time had to fade due to the noise in the cafeteria. 5th grade was separated into two groups, and our classes were outside in the portables. These portables had bad conditions, such as they have less space than a classroom inside the building. The classes inside have lockers, and the portables had and still have hooks for our belongings. This is a safety hazard in case of an emergency. Can you imagine having fire and students evacuating? They could be caught and tangled amongst backpacks on the floor. This does not only concern me, but also my family. My brother is in 4th grade, and he has to attend class outside. Having classes outside in the portables has caused him to get sick because of weather conditions. Over the past years, the population has risen drastically. For example, in 5th grade, in my 5th grade, there were only two teachers, and now there are four 5th grade teachers. The bathrooms are a health hazard because frequently they tend to glago. One year, we even had a nasty smell in the hallway because the pipe burst. I ask that you please take care of school, and I say "our" school, because I am still a great part of Tyler Heights. As a family member and an active volunteer for after-school activities, please help our support and our community and support us in getting a new building. I thank you tremendously for the time that you have taken to listen about my concerns for Tyler Heights Elementary. Thank you.
Good job, young one. Where's your parents at? Are they here?
Yes.
There you go. You're proud of him, right? Very good. Young lady, you wanna fire away with your name, please? Go ahead.
Jennifer.
How you doing, Ms. Jennifer?
Good.
Good. What you got to say for it, sweetie?
I am Jennifer. I am a 4th grade student at Tyler Heights Elementary School. I want to tell you how it's like to be at Tyler Heights where there's not a lot of space. At my school, there are two-girl bathroom and two-boy bathroom. All the students of pre-k use these four bathrooms. The bathroom that I use is used by two 1st grade classes, five 2nd grade classes, and four 3rd grade classes, and four 4th grade classes, and three 5th grade classes. Because so many students use these bathrooms, they get dirty and it floods. One day, a girl in my class and me went to the bathroom. She said it was an emergency, so we went quickly to the bathroom. Other people were using the bathroom. There were no toilets free, so she had an accident. And her day was not so good. When we went back to her classroom, she was embarrassed. Almost, almost times when it gets, when we get to the cafeteria for lunch, there is a class in front of us, so we have to wait on the lunch line for all the time. Last Wednesday, when I got out of the line, I stopped and put some cheese on my pasta. When I was done, a teacher was telling each class in my grade that it was time to clean up lunch, so I had to eat quickly, but I didn't eat all my lunch. As I dumped my food, I cleaned my tray. I took two more bites. Then, when I was back to the classroom, I was still hungry. It was not easy concentrating. I was hungry still. We called the cafeteria the multipurpose room because it's also our gym. Last weekend, our gym teacher lost her voice because the band student was practicing on stage in the gym. So, our gym teacher had to yell because students couldn't hear. Please help us make our school building bigger. Thank you for giving your attention. Have a good evening.
Great job. Where's your mom or dad here?
Yes.
Good job. Boy, you did well with her, didn't you? Good for you. Good for you. Is anybody else coming up? One more? Here they come. How did we get lucky to meet such nice people today? So I'm not sure which your names are, sweetie. So tell me your name, please.
My name is Catherine.
Okay, go ahead. You start off.
Good evening. My name is Catherine, and I am in 5th grade at Tyler Heights Elementary School. I am here today to talk about our school building and why we need a new one. In our school, we have 13 portables because there are too many students to fit inside the building. This problem is affecting our learning every day. One reason is our portable is right near the blacktop. When all the students are outside for recess, we can hear them play, and it is hard for us to concentrate. When I was in 4th grade, there was a tornado warning. All of the 4th grade students had to go inside and build, build, inside the building because we couldn't stay outside in the portables. We had to stay in the library, and we had to learn there. When the students were teaching, it was hard to, it was hard to hear because we were all squished together, because we could only have one class or two or three tables. Because there were too many people, it was not fun, and we couldn't concentrate to learn. We had to stay in the library until the end of the day. Another problem is assemblies. Our assemblies are in the cafeteria. Every morning, assembly is a time to celebrate us and us going to college. When we were in assemblies, we are all squished together. Pre-k can't come because the cafeterias is too small for us all to fit. All the lunch tables today take up space, but they had to be in there. If you come in late, it is, it is hard to get through all the students to find our teachers. I think Friday morning assemblies would be better if we had more space so we can divide the cafeteria into the space for assemblies and a place for lunch. We can't do that because it is too small. I love Tyler Heights because you can make friends, and the teachers are very encouraging. We can, we can make our school better by making our school better. Instead of 13 portables, let's make it zero. Thank you, and I hope you enjoyed my speech.
Thank you. Very good job. Is your parents here? Okay, and what do you have for us, young lady?
Um...
What's your name?
Addie.
Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming down here tonight, okay? Okay, what do you want to tell us, sweetie?
Good evening. My name is Addie, and I'm in 3rd grade at Tyler Heights Elementary School. I'm here to talk to you about the problems with our building. My classroom is outside in a portable. The portable is a little mini classroom outside. The problem with the portables outside is that we need to use passes to get inside the building. Sometimes the passes break, stop working, or they get lost. Each class has only one pass to get inside. When they get lost, we can't get inside. If we have to go inside the building, it is a long walk outside. Outside, when we are trying to walk to get somewhere important, there are other classes coming at the same time, and it gets very crowded. When it is raining, your shoes get wet and muddy, sometimes the puddles overflow, and when we walk, we might trip and get dirty. So all the day, we have to stay wet and dirty. It's really hard because the doors, to get inside the building, sometimes the doors get jammed. We always, we have to go inside to use the bathroom, go to the nurse, get to the cafeteria, and also to media, art, music, STEM, and PE. Portables don't have any lockers. They don't have much space, and they don't have water. We have a water jug and cups that we use to drink in a water portable, and water in the portable. When we run out of water in our water jugs, we have to wait a while to get water jugs. If we're at the state and the water jug is out, we can't get a drink from inside unless we are already inside at that time. I don't feel very safe in my portable because if there was a tornado or hurricane, it would not be safe. Because inside the building, it is much better than being in a portable, because if you have to go to the bathroom, it is much closer and not as a long walk. You wouldn't need a key to go to the bathroom. It is better to be in the building or outside in the portables. Other classes walk by and are disrupted. The classes will be outside for recess. Thank you for taking your time and hearing my speech. I hope you did.
Good job, sweetie. Now, sweetie, I need your first name and last name completely for the record. What's your last name?
Henderson.
Very nice. Is your mom or dad here by any chance? Congratulations. Nice job. Beautiful daughter. Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. You might, some of you might be wondering what prompted this overwhelming outpouring from the community, and some of you may not know that currently, the Board of Education is looking at the Annapolis area for possible redistricting solutions. And Tyler Heights, in particular, is an elementary school that has a severe overcrowding problem and is the focus of that redistricting effort. And there are community meetings that are ongoing to talk about the different options, but what we've heard, I think, from the community highlights the need to address that situation. So thank you all for coming out, and as I said to some of you, I'll remind you that there will be a new council that will be seated in December that will make the budget decisions for next year, and so you might have to come back at that time. But thank you for coming out and bringing your concerns to our attention tonight.
And like I said before, if you let us know ahead of time, and Sumanam here and Mr. Trumbauer's here, we'll have some pizza and sodas for you, okay? We just gotta let us know, okay? Thank you for coming out. Okay, moving on our agenda here. Let's see, is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? You got more people?
Ms. Chairman, I just want to make the note that I hope to be here next year, too.
There you go. Thanks, buddy. Okay, where we at here? 10 and 11, okay. 10 and 11, let's see, Mandy, Mandy Doradish? Rightish?
No.
I've got a different sheet than you've got. Okay, this one. Roger that. Okay, let's see, let's try it again. Elizabeth Bosboy?
Bospor.
Bospor. I thought it might have been a B. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, and Mr. John Corin. Come on down.
Come on over this way.
Roger that. Go ahead, Madam, name and address, please.
Elizabeth Bosbor, 24 Severn Way, Arnold, Maryland 21012. Tonight, I'm here as President of Arnold Preservation Council, representing over 5,000 constituents in County Council District 5. On behalf of Arnold Preservation Council, we want to thank Councilman Dick Ladd for representing us these last four years. Sir, you've made every effort to hear all sides. You have worked with us. You have kept us informed. You have opened your door, and you have taken our calls, even when they weren't during the workday, but early morning and on weekends. We have not always agreed, but you have listened. From endless weeknight meetings to meeting on Sunday morning on flooded roads, you have given your all, and your tirelessly efforts are greatly appreciated. We know it was a team, larger effort, full of blondes, and sir, we thank you. God bless.
Thank you very much. And just so you understand, this is a lady that gets up at 6:30, 7 o'clock, and goes out and runs too many miles. So I know that if there's something important that we've got to talk about, I know where I can get it sometime between 6:45 and 7:15, and she will be gracious enough to stop and take a break at her running. That's a type A woman. 30 years, college reunion this weekend, too. Great lady. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Corin?
Yes, I'm John Corin. I live at 125 Hillcrest Lane in Severna Park. First, let me echo Elizabeth's thank you to Councilman Ladd. I'm also President of Severn Heights Improvement Association, a member of Arnold Preservation Council. I've seen Dick at so many community meetings, so engaged in constituent services, we too appreciate it. I'm also here as President of Bicycle Advocates for Annapolis and Anaronda County. We're a relatively new 501(c)(3), all-volunteer group in the county. We have built wonderful partnership with many county agencies. Lieutenant Ennis and others on the police force. George Cardwell's here, planning and zoning. We've been working closely with them, wrecking parks. As some of you may know, we hosted a first-of-a-kind Anaronda County Century Ride yesterday and had over 500 cyclists ride the entire county, from the airport down to Galesville and back. You started on a journey with the Complete Streets Working Group earlier this year. Later today, you'll vote on a Complete Streets Working Group policy, and you started on a journey that we hope you'll complete and get from policy to implementation. There are very few ways to spend a very small amount of money and improve the health of our citizens, reduce traffic and parking problems, improve our environment, and if none of those three work for you, drive our economy. Because the next generation is looking for transportation options, and to make this an attractive place, a more attractive place to live, work, play, and visit, we've got to make it a more bikeable, walkable community. Bike AAA and our hundreds of members stand ready to continue to work with county agencies to make that vision come true. Thank you. And here's my billboard.
Hey, John. For the record. John, we've talked about this, but I won't have a chance to see you publicly, but one thing that I think bikers should think about is build me a list of somebody of what I call the Dirty Dozen. The worst spots for people on bikes on our roads, where, you know, where the neck's down, you've got no place to go, people can't see you. You know, we talk about this policy. That at least will tell us where, if we got some money, we can go and get. So from your guys' point of view, you ought to get a list of the Dirty Dozen. I'd like to see it. We'll get it to the right hands.
I mean, it's both the most dangerous places, and it's also the most important places for biking, for recreation, and for transportation. If I can just give you one real-world example, a connector from the B&amp;A Trail to an Anaronda Community College, 10,000 people in cars going there every day. When they're within half a mile, there's a crow flies from the trail. We worked with planning and zoning. We've got grant from the state to do a design study. So it's also sort of the most important connectors. I also want to recognize Councilman Trumbauer, who did 58 miles on the ride yesterday.
Okay, let's move on. We got a big meeting tonight. Thank you for coming out. And just a thing, I don't know if you've ever been to Amsterdam, but Amsterdam's a very interesting city. You've got thousands of bicycles all through the alleys that people have bicycle highways and go to work every day, and it's a great thing. Anybody else want to come up and chime in for a public hearing? Or, okay, seeing to move it, let's move forward. Councilman Ladd, did you have to say anything else?
Yeah, I would like to just inform my colleagues, and at least say in public, that I have received a letter from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development concerning early Heights, early-stationed apartments or workforce housing. And this is, to my knowledge, the first time that I've seen implementation of a bill that we passed several years ago, Bill 5611. In this particular case, they are asking our input, my input for my constituents, about how they should allocate funds to support low-income housing or workforce housing. In this particular case, they're talking about putting 85 apartments on 4.9 acres right smack dab in the middle of an R2 community. And we got into the situation where we brought all the workforce housing out of commercial and out of the industrial thing and authorized it to go into R2, R5, R10, and R15 areas. And this is the first time I've seen firsthand where you can go in and take a lot and say, "I'm gonna put an apartment complex in here," independent of what the surrounding neighborhood is. And there were a lot of very complicated issues, which we've seen in my district, and it really raises a lot of questions in my mind about the wisdom of that policy, notwithstanding the fact that it has, the particular product has to come back and get approved by the council. There's a lot of things we have to work for, and it's something that we've just got to understand, to go into communities that may have R2 or R5, and be able to put 22 apartments per acre in there and try to feel that those things are, you know, compatible is a problem. And I think we need to look at that, and I hope that my successor will at least give some time to talk about that. And I think, I think we've got to work on that, and I think there's some things that need to be done. Implicitly, the issue is you can go into any residential neighborhood, have a couple of acres, and you can put apartment houses in there at a density that is not authorized in any other place. And the bill says that it must be 22 homes per acre. Not up to, it shall be. And it's just too rigid. There's just not enough flexibility to make this thing work, in my opinion. And I want my colleagues to hear it from me. I've got to say it publicly. Darrell authored the bill. That's fine. I voted for it. But when you see some of these unintended consequences, that's where we run into problems. And we got one right here. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're gonna move fast, so folks, hold on. Okay, may I have a motion at the partial reading of any bill resolution or amendment constitutes the reading of a whole? Can I get a first?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 6, 2000, or October 6 and 14 of 2014.
The meetings were called to order by Chairman John Grasso.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 6 and the 14 of 2014?
Second.
Roger that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, minutes of October 6th and 14th, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, before you go further, I don't have an agenda in front of me, and Mr. Walker doesn't either. I wonder if maybe no one got one?
There, you can have one over here.
Well, all right, I'll share.
You guys share. Pretend you're in high school.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolutions being introduced this evening.
Resolution 4714, resolution appointing a member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission, resolution 4814, resolution urging the county executive and county council taking office on December 1st, 2014, to establish the position of the Anarundel County Compliance Officer.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolution numbers 4414, 4214, bills number 74, 7514, 7614, 7714, 5914, 6014, 7414, 6414, 6614, 6814, 7214, 7814, 7914, and 7314, and resolution numbers 3914, 4014, 4114, 4314, 4514, 4614, 4714, 4814, out of order. Thank you. Can I get a second? All right, Madam Secretary, you want to call off roll, please?
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, motion to suspend the rules to hear and/or vote on resolutions 4414 and 4214, and bill numbers 75, 76, 77, 59, 60, 74, 64, 66, 68, 72, 78, 79, and 7314, and resolution numbers 39, 40, 41, 43, 45, 46, 47, and 4814, out of order passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 4414.
Resolution approving the continued service of Daniel L. Kane as Acting Director of Inspections and Permits.
Roger that, and we have Ms. Burdick. How are you doing this evening?
I'm just fine, thank you. Amy Burdick, Acting Personnel Officer. I'm here to answer any questions you have about the resolution to continue Mr. Kane as the Acting Director of Inspections and Permits.
Okay, anybody got any questions? I don't see any. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, is anyone who wishes to speak on resolution 4414, please come forward or forever hold your peace. Okay, public hearing is now closed on 4414. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 4414.
Resolution approving the continued service of Daniel L. Kane as Acting Director of Inspections and Permits.
Okay, any more discussion in the council? Seeing no movement, Madam Secretary, please call the roll, resolution 4414.
Mr. Walker?
I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, resolution 4414 has passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 4214.
Resolution 4214, a resolution concerning the creation of a tax increment development district to be designated as Odenton Town Center Development District.
Mr. Hammond and friends? I want to let you know, Mr. Hammond, and I've been using that Captain Smith in the Titanic story an awful lot lately, just to let you know, yours ought to be burning. Okay, what do you folks have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Evening.
John Hammond, Budget Officer, and joining me is Julie Musog, who is the County Controller, Bill Hen, who is our Bond Counsel, and Larry Tom, Director of Planning and Zoning, and we're here to talk to you about a resolution that would create a special, create a tax increment district, a tax increment development district in the Odenton area. This resolution merely creates a geographic area to be designated as the Odenton Town Center Development District, and it's basically the area under the tortoise shell north of Route 175 and south of Route 32, and then includes the area of Boomtown, north of Route 32, and to the east of Fort Meade, and a few blocks to the west of Route 175 that would include the Mark train station. Again, this just creates a district, and the consequence of creating a district is that it creates a base assessment upon which a tax increment is then based upon as property values increase over the years. It's a tool of economic development, it's something that the county has utilized in other areas of the county, and given the need for public infrastructure improvements in the Odenton area, we view this as a tool that can be effectively utilized to enhance the development of Odenton. And with that, I'm here to answer, and the panel here is here to answer any questions you may have concerning this proposal.
Okay, council, nobody moving? Have a nice evening. Okay, let's see, we're going to open up public hearing on 4214. Anybody like to come down and speak? I do have a person signed up, Claire Lauder. Let's come on down. Hey, I'm sure they warmed it up for you, Ms. Lauder, so if you'd like to have a seat. Mr. Hammond's real good at doing that, you might want to grab his seat.
I'll say Julie.
What are you trying to say? What's wrong with Julie? You like Julie, you don't like Jones? Okay, go ahead, Madam, please state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Claire Lauder. I'm the President and CEO of the West Anarundel County Chamber of Commerce, and my address is 8385 Piney Orchard Parkway. I am here to state that this is an extremely important bill for the Odenton Town Center. The passage of a TIF district has been on the chamber's agenda for years, and the Odenton Town Center has been planned since 1968. I know you don't like it when we continue to emphasize it, but there is a reason that we do, and we can't afford to continue to stall the work in the Odenton Town Center. The only way to get the needed infrastructure, including but not limited to roads and garages in a timely manner in Odenton, if anything there can be called timely at this point, is through tax increment financing. We've exhausted the other options, and it is important that we pass this bill before the end of this council, in other words, tonight, so that we do not lose the 2013 increment, which is a significant amount of the new development that has occurred in Odenton. We believe that spending the tax increment on the new infrastructure will result in more new development, and hence more tax revenues for the county in the long run. We do have some concerns about the bill. These include that the list of projects needs to be considered more broadly, I believe there may be an amendment today that takes care of that. Experience tells us that we will get one shot at this, and it needs to be inclusive, and that a stakeholders group should be convened to identify projects before bonds are issued, rather than having that decision being made just by the county. Impact freeze from the area should also be targeted to projects in the Town Center District, as is done at Anarundel Mills. Current law encourages that, but in practicality, the funds are going elsewhere. We also need to maximize use of funds available for needed infrastructure by including the BRAC revitalization zones for Odenton. And to allay the concerns of local residents who still remember the debacle of the poorly proposed special tax district in 2008, language clarifying that a special tax district is not intended to be part of the proposed TIF district should be included. I thank you for your time, and I urge passage of this resolution.
Thank you for coming down this evening. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Once again, I'm confused and bewildered. I really do not understand exactly what this bill is, but my sense is that there is money involved, and that it comes from the taxpayers. Now, that might be a gross misunderstanding, but if it didn't come from the taxpayers, why would it be here? I'm not sure what the amount is, and I'm not sure who it is who's benefiting. And I would really appreciate that when you do these kinds of things, that it not, you know, that there be, you know, a little greater clarity, some of it's called transparency, but it would really help to put the information out there on the table. Heaven knows I support, you know, the improvements in Odenton, but with the Brackray adjustment and the number of employees that will be located in that neck of the woods or that part of the county, there are a lot of people, that means a lot of customers, that means a lot of money, part of the taxpayers. Isn't there someone out there who can do some development who does not need to be subsidized by the taxpayers? I don't know, but again, I would really appreciate further clarification, because I remain confused and bewildered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your input. Always appreciate it. Okay, anybody else want to come down and speak on 4214? Seeing no one jumping out of their seat, public hearing on resolution 4214 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 4214.
A resolution concerning the creation of a tax increment development district to be designated as Odenton Town Center Development District.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing no movement. All right, let's see, we have three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment requires that revenue received for BRAC zone qualified properties under the BRAC revitalization and incentive zone program be included in the TIF special fund for the Odenton Town Center District, defines the eligible payments in the BRAC zone, and requires payment of the BRAC payments to the fund until all bonds are paid.
All right, get a motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and sponsor, Mr. Benoit, you want to chime in?
Please, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This bill, or this amendment, rather, simply would require, to the extent a bond bill follows this, would require revenues from grants issued by the state under the BRAC Act to be used in the, in the TIF. And it, really, all this does is confirm what, in my view, is already required under state law, and that is that the BRAC payments that are generated in the BRAC zone have to be used there. So to the extent the BRAC zone, the Odenton BRAC zone and this TIF overlap, the revenues collected from, under the BRAC Act, would have to be used in the TIF. Thank you.
Administration?
Yeah, I think this is a concept that I did mention during the work session. I'm not so sure the state law requires that the money be used for a TIF. It allows it to be used for a TIF, and I think this is putting on the handcuffs a little, a little bit, in saying that this money will go into the TIF. The BRAC zone money can be used for public improvements in the area, but it doesn't have to be in a TIF. So if that's the direction of policy you want to establish, that you're going to tighten down a little bit and lose a little bit of flexibility, that certainly is your, your option.
We could always change it, though, right?
Oh, absolutely.
There you go. So let's, I guess, let's see what it played at that point. Mr. Tom, you got anything to say?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? Seeing no one jumping in, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One has passed.
All right, let's see, Madam Secretary, you want to read Amendment Number Two.
This amendment adds improvements for Maryland Routes 170 and 175, and replacement and relocation of underground utilities to the list of eligible purposes for financing under the Special Tax Increment Fund.
Motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, Roger that. Mr. Benoit?
Mr. Chairman, this, for me, touches on the, probably the most problematic part of the resolution, from my perspective, anyway, and that is that we've, the resolution as it was submitted to us effectively calls out one project. The words are, among the purposes for which the TIF revenues can be used, is there's sort of an earmark for the Mark Garage. Having represented this part of the county for a long time, I can tell you there's a lot of other projects that are very interested in participating in tax increment financing and a bond issuance, should one follow sometime next year or the year after. So this amendment simply adds to the permissible uses, other uses that relate to other very large projects in the town center. And certainly, I'd like, whether the administration, the next administration, and the next council agree, remains to be seen, but since this resolution calls out one project, I want to, through this amendment, make it clear that there's other types of improvements in the town center that would be eligible.
Administration?
Yeah, I mean, this, this amendment is really not necessary. The language is broad enough already in the, in the resolution to encompass each one of these projects. Had we not specifically included a project like the, the parking garages, we would be, have been criticized because it's too general. So, you know, you win, you can't win. But again, the language in the resolution is broad enough to cover these projects, to the extent that they are public improvements, so it's, again, if it makes you feel better, go ahead.
Roughly right, right? Kind of goes along with that. Okay, Roger that. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Amendment Number Two?
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Two has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
This amendment clarifies that property owners may not be required to form a special taxing district in order to be eligible for financing improvements with tax increment revenue bonds.
Motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You got a second?
Second.
All right, there we go. Twisting some arms there. Mr. Benoit?
So, Mr. Chairman, I've passed down, this is the first time in my eight years on the council, this is my last meeting tonight, by the way, and it's the first time I've used photographic evidence to support an amendment that I've introduced. And there's a, there are about, I don't know, five, six, 700 people, property owners in the, in the town center, in this TIF district, who live there, and who have houses there. And what I passed around to you was, was the county's response at the mere mention of a special tax district in the Odenton Town Center. In 2008, myself and the former head of economic development went down and started talking to people about the concept of a special tax district, and that billboard, for those of you, well, not, not watching at home, because no one watches from home, but for those of you sitting out in the crowd, it's a sign on a marquee, it says, this, this week's installment said, "Councilman Benoit backs developers over the local community." But it changed every week, and the next week it would say, "County Executive Leopold backs developers," so they just changed the top line. But it's a sensitive subject for the folks out there, and I think you all are going to hear from people, those of you who are back, if you open the door to a special tax district. So I think if you all, in your prerogative, decide that's okay, when I'm gone, that's up to you, but, but I'd be walking away from my obligations to the people that live there if I didn't put this amendment in. Thank you.
Administration, you say?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a, clearly a substantive amendment that could have an impact, and it could work to the detriment of what the community in Odenton is applauding this initiative for. And that is, it could raise the cost of the borrowings that may be undertaken to, to provide the public improvements. The purpose of having a special taxing district underneath a tax increment district is to have additional collateral available, should the tax increment not be sufficient, and thereby providing a lower interest rate when the bond issue is sold at, to the public. So by having a additional collateral, you're lowering the risk. If you don't want to lower the risk, the necessary consequence is higher interest rate. It's interesting also to note that in order to establish a special taxing district, two-thirds of the assessed value of the property owners have to approve, and two-thirds of the actual property owners have to approve. Now compare that to a bill that you all just defeated, that would have required a three-quarter vote for a special community benefit district. You thought that was too stringent, and you said, "We're going to stick with 50 percent." But for a special taxing district, it's two-thirds. It's already more stringent than what you require for a special community benefit district. So it doesn't seem to be logically fit into the, the policies that you all are establishing. So I would argue that there are substantial protections right now that would not allow for the concern that Mr. Benoit has voiced, that this is going to be foisted upon folks that don't want it. It's a two-thirds requirement, both on the number of properties and the assessable value. And it's going to have the consequence, if you totally preclude special taxing districts, of raising the, the risk, and consequently, the interest rate, which is going to end up costing the county more money to, to provide those public improvements. So I would urge that this amendment not be adopted.
And administration's against it?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Right.
If I may, Mr. Hammond, can you tell me how, let's say hypothetically, we, that
I think it can be done, to the extent that the, whatever tax increment improvement that you're building can be directly related to specific property owners, then you could apply those special taxes to those property owners that were benefiting from the TIF. Now, you'd have to meet the requirements of a special taxing district. The properties would have to be contiguous. You couldn't be hopscotching around.
Like, for example, the Odenton, the Mark Garage, let's say we put something there, we use tax increment financing to put a garage there, and right around the corner there on Duckin Street, you know, someone who lives there, but just, you know, a family living in their house, we could then say to them, "You're benefiting from this parking garage, even though you're using your property as a single-family resident?"
No, I wouldn't say that. You might, but I wouldn't say it. I mean, the improvement, parking garage, would be more logically related to a developer who may have gotten some development incentive bonus, a better four-area ratio, because these parking spaces are being provided, and that would be someone who would be very closely identified to the public improvement and benefiting from it, and thereby be legitimately exposed to a special taxing district.
And we already have a special tax district there of sorts, right?
Pardon me?
We already sort of have a special taxing district in the town center, right? For the what? Didn't we do one sort of a quasi-special tax district?
We have, we created a sewer, a sewer district, a special sewer district, to pay for the improvements to the sewer that allowed for the development, but that's based upon new hookups, you know? That's a, that's a, a impact, a sewer impact fee that new development pays.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, this ought to be interesting. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 4214.
Amendment Number Three.
Yes, that's right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three. We're going to call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trombauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Three has passed.
We'll be a bunch of diehards tonight, huh?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Fink.
I should have been vocal before we started the public hearings of, I can just take a quick minute and talk to the administration about this bill. You know, some of my concerns, Mr. Hammond, are the whole process. I mean, my understanding is that the county's been working on a TIF for well over seven years. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
We've been working on this for over seven years. It's been an idea of a TIF, you know, in that area for quite some time.
I know several people have had an idea, but yeah.
And then, you know, this administration waited to the very last minute, the last date possible, to put it before us. And there seems to be a lot of, a lot of issues with this bill that's never, never really applied to other TIFs, in that we really have no idea how much the bonds could be for this park, for this parking center. We have no idea what the costs are. We have no idea what it could eventually cost a future general fund, money coming from the future general fund, to pay for any type of overage that the TIF didn't collect that we owe on these bonds. What do you say to that? I mean, it just seems like the administration threw this before us, we don't know how much it costs, we don't exactly know how we're going to spend this money. We may need to borrow money from the future general fund to cover this TIF payment. Maybe we don't, maybe we do.
I would say that we can't sell any bonds unless this body approves them. So it's not something that the administration can unilaterally do, and I would point out that this administration has only been in office approximately 18 months and has come to the conclusion that this is something that would be a good tool to have for economic development. This resolution doesn't do anything, as you point out, as far as the amount that we borrow. When we get to that point, we can decide how big the bond issue should be, based upon what the cash flow from the increment may be, and also with the amendment that Mr. Benoit has put in, how much BRAC funds will be there, and that will determine the eventual size of the issue.
But that's not the way we've done these in the past, is my understanding.
Well, again, in the past, the council has approved every bond issue. Nothing's going to change in this case either. We have taken a two-step process here to, one, create the district, and as I said at the work session, the reason we wanted to create the district, and what you heard from Ms. Louder tonight, was to establish a base as of January 1, 2013. That's the whole thrust of why we're here tonight. The second step can be taken at some point in the future, deciding upon the size of the bond and what specific capital improvements those bonds would be financing. There's nothing wrong with that.
But why collect the money if we don't have a specific project?
Because we want to establish the base today. We know that this is a tool that can be used and can be effectively utilized to enhance the economic development of, you know...
It's $500,000 that's coming from the general fund for something that we may not need, for something that we may not use.
This is like a parent saying...
For something we only need $100,000 for.
What you're advocating is like a parent saying, "I'm not going to establish a 529 account until my child knows what college he's going to." You need to start saving ahead of time.
What I'm advocating for is not saving for college before you have kids. If I'm 19-years-old without children, I'm not going to save for college for that child I might have at 30-years-old.
Well, in this case, in this case, we have children, we have needs, we have economic development issues and all good.
But we don't know what they are. We don't, I'm 19, I don't have kids, I never want to have them.
So we want to establish, we want to establish a mechanism that will allow us to deal with it and to do it in a timely fashion.
But we're just collecting money for projects that may or may not be there.
And that's all that we're doing tonight, Mr. Fink.
Collecting money.
No, we're not.
We are, it's $500,000 going to be in that TIF fund.
And if we don't have a project, that money can find its way right back to the general
fund. Or when we have a project, we start collecting the money.
I can explain it to you, Mr. Fink.
I think that just comes down to fellow members of this council, basically, you know, do we need to start collecting this money when there is no project, there is no cost, we have no idea how it's going to be used, why do we need to separate it? And essentially, cost the general fund, of which could be $500,000 for several of us that hope to be here next year.
Well, I can only point out the successes of our previous TIFs, and I think they've worked out quite well for us.
And I think your previous TIFs operated completely different than the way you've thrown this in front of us today.
I don't think so. I would disagree with that.
I think the Madam Auditor could comment on that better than I could.
It's a matter of form over substance.
Is this the way we did it in the past, or not?
We have approved a special, a development district, and as part of that development district, we've identified that we may issue bonds. In some instances, we've been more specific about the bonds, but, Mr. Fink, as I've tried to explain to you, there is nothing wrong with what we're doing. This is how a lot of other jurisdictions do their TIFs. They create the mechanism, and then, once they've created it, then they can see what cash flows are coming and decide upon what specific bonds they're going to issue. And again, the county council, the future county council, is going to be the determinant of that, not the administration's, it's the county council. So in that regards, nothing's changed.
But at the end of the day, I would say to the fellow members of this council that we don't need this money in there today. There's no sense in separating, no sense in collecting that $500,000 today, when we have absolutely no use for it. We don't know how much these projects are going to cost, we don't know what the overage is going to be that's going to come out of the general fund later down the road. And, you know, reading the auditor's letter, you know, they're going to have these costs in December, and this TIF is probably a great thing. We can take, the next council can take it up in January and have the costs in front of them and know what it's going to cost.
And then you'd support it after January.
I would support it, knowing what the costs are.
There you go. Mr. Chair? Mr. Ladd?
If this is approved, Mr. Hammond, would you expect that there would be projects for which we would seek bonding authority proposed in the next budget?
It depends upon how far down the road we get, specifically with the transportation-oriented development that we're working with the state. I'm not sure that we can get that project down the road that fast in order to have it be a capital project that we would be asked funding in 2016.
So is it conceivable that at some day, there would be like a capital improvement program, program, multi-year path of the projects that you expect to do? Not you, but the...
No, I would think that, again, there are many infrastructure needs out in the Odenton area, and this is one of a number of tools that can be used to help finance those infrastructure improvements. And I would certainly anticipate a TIF being a good tool to use in this instance.
So I, between the lines, your testimony, I think, is that if we are unable to come up with projects to request the use of the funds in the 14 budget, they would migrate, as current practice, back into the general fund?
Well, we'd be doing, I mean, we're in the 15 budget now, the 16 budget.
Talk about the 16, yeah. 16 budget tax bills.
I think it, they may, or they may not. I mean, it may be that, you know, 2017 looks like a good year, and why not keep the 2016 funds in the special revenue fund to help us jumpstart a capital project?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jones?
Ms. Sutherland, there was a question that was asked of you, and I don't think you had an opportunity to respond, and it's the same question I would have. It seems as though I recall when we did TIFs from the previous council in the northern part of the county, we had identified the project and sort of knew what we were working toward and what the TIF was a purpose toward. Is the representation of what's occurring here typical with regards to how our TIFs operate?
In my opinion, it's not typical of how we've done it in the past. We have six TIFs right now. There were resolutions that, for example, created the parole TIF, but in that resolution, it declared the county's intent to issue a specific amount of bonds for very specific improvements that were listed as an exhibit to that resolution. The same thing happened with the West County TIF. The Arundel Mills TIF was established by ordinance, with a special tax district to back it up. It listed the bonds, it listed the improvements. The Nursery Road TIF was originally created in 1984 for specific transportation bonds that we repaid. So there are six TIFs, and each of those TIFs, when they were considered by the county council, were for very specific improvements, with the amount of bonds either identified by ordinance at this time, a companion ordinance, or an amount not to exceed stated in the resolution that created the TIF with the county's declaration that they intended to issue an amount of bonds.
So from your professional opinion and advice in this council, in the manner in which we're being asked to proceed in this particular instance, is this something that's wise for this council to support?
It is a policy decision for the council to make whether they want to create the TIF when they do not know the amount of bonds that might be issued, the amount of revenue that's going, projected to come in, particularly with the amendment that Mr. Benoit put in for the BRAC revenue. I don't know if we're going to issue $30 million worth of bonds, $50 million worth of bonds, $10 million worth of bonds. It's just not clear, and we don't know what the revenue's going to be to pay those bonds off. I understand Mr. Hammond's argument that that's going to come in a subsequent ordinance, but it clearly is different than what you've done in the past. And if you have the FY16, I'm sorry, the FY15 budget, general fund is based on getting that $500,000 and it being a general fund revenue. If you pass this resolution, it's not going to be a general fund revenue, it's going to be a TIF revenue. So you have a $500,000 general fund shortfall. If you don't issue the bonds, you can transfer that money over from the TIF to the general fund to cover it. You can do that again in '16 if you don't issue the bonds. But at the point that you issue the bonds, the revenue has to stay in that fund to pay the bonds unless you have excess, and we don't know whether you will or not. And at that point, you've got a $500,000 revenue shortfall, or $500,000 less than you would now have in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
If I could add, Mr. Jones, I would point out that what we're proposing here for the Odenton TIF is very similar to what we've done with the parole TIF. The auditor mentioned six. The other five were what I would call developer-sponsored TIFs, very specific. They brought them to us and laid it all out with the parole TIF. We were working with the state. It involved creating an interchange on Route 50. We were much further along with the process with the state on that particular project, and that's why we were able to not only create the TIF and have an idea of the cost in that specific instance, but again, the concept is the same. We're working with the state on this transportation-oriented development. We want to establish a base at a timely manner, and this resolution will do that. And I'd also point out, as far, once again, this straw man that's been created about too many bonds and not knowing the revenue, it can't be done unless the county council approves. The administration does not have license to unilaterally move forward on this. You all get to examine the specific proposal and evaluate whether it's a worthy project and whether it is financially stable and sustainable.
Mr. Chair? So why collect the money?
Because we want to create the TIF, again, Councilman Fink, to establish a base at this time, so that we can have a low base, so that the increment can be that much greater as we go along.
So it's a strategy of, "Give us the money, we'll find a way to spend it."
No, it's not.
That's exactly. You want the money, but you have no way to spend it. You have no plans, and in fact, I believe you've said that you're not going to spend it next year.
That's not what I said, Mr. Fink. You can characterize my comments any way you want to, but that's not what I said.
I might be wrong on that point, that's fine. But you've definitely said that you don't have any plans to spend that money right now.
We have plans to use the money for economic development improvements in the Odenton area. That's why we're creating this. So if you say there are no plans...
We can say that about every property in the Anarundel County, we have plans to help the infrastructure on that project. I mean, that's silly. Ms. Sutherland, you touched on paying these bonds, and the money has to stay in the TIF fund to cover the bond, but what happens if there's not enough money in that TIF fund to cover the bond?
I believe, given the amendment that you just passed, that there can't be a special tax district to back it up, the county would be obligated to pay that debt, whether the TIF revenue were sufficient or not.
So it would come out of a general fund?
Yes.
I think that would depend upon what you say in the bond ordinance and the bond transcript as to what the available sources of payment. If you don't put a general county pledge of taxes on it, I think that would not necessarily be the case.
And do you think those bonds would sell without a general obligation?
Well, that's, again, that's my point that I was trying to make on Mr. Benoit's Third Amendment.
But his amendment is...
They might, they might, they might not be able to sell, and as a consequence of that amendment, you've undermined the whole purpose of what we're trying to do. But that was a policy decision you just made.
Just something else we don't know about this.
Mr. Fink, my take on it would be, with the amendment that you just passed, with no special tax district backup, I think it's unlikely those bonds would sell without a general obligation, full faith and credit of the county behind them, in which case the general fund would be making up any shortfall.
And aren't there two proposals out there now of, I guess, developer TIFs, developer-initiated TIFs that the administration just hasn't signed off on?
I'm aware that we've had one developer in the Odenton area come forward and ask that a TIF be created, and the administration has taken no action on that.
How long have they had that? A while, or...
I think I received that, I want to say, sometime in July.
Okay. Again, just, members of this council, it's not that I oppose the TIF, I just oppose the way we're going about it today, especially when we'll have more numbers in December. I don't know why this council or this administration feels the need to start this when we really don't have any answers. Why not leave it to the next administration, the next council, when there are bills in front of us, there are estimates, we know what the project is, we know what the cost is, and, you know, according to the blue letter, you know, this next council, next administration could do this in January. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, that was quite interesting. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 4214 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trombauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution 4214 as amended is passed.
Okay. That's the, Madam Secretary, please read a title of Bill Number 7514.
An Ordinance Concerning Commercial Revitalization District Program.
Okay, Mr. Hammond again.
We're getting you all warmed up today, aren't we?
Yes, indeed. Appreciate you, I appreciate you rearranging the agenda for this evening.
7514. Okay.
This, this particular ordinance changes the definition of a qualified property in a commercial revitalization district in that the current provision in the code that deals with commercial revitalization provides a specific exclusion if the property is in
pages, I'm willing to bet, right? Okay. Anybody want to come down and speak on 7514?
This louder.
Come on down, this louder. You're going to be regular popular tonight, aren't you?
That's right. It's nice and cool now. All right. You didn't stay for long. I'll keep this very brief. This bill is actually a matter of fairness. The North Odenon or Boomtown area is a very difficult one in which to develop, and that's the reason that we have a commercial revitalization program there. A number of developers relied on that program in planning their projects and developing their finance plan, and they are underway now, and to pull those funds out from under them now would stop those projects. So it's very important to make an allowance for these. Unfortunately, grandfathering in a situation like this does not work because they don't actually apply for the revitalization credits until after the assessment is determined, which is well after the project is completed. So thank you for your time, and I urge passage of this bill.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Jones.
Ms. Louter, with the commercial revitalization project over in Boomtown off of 175, do you know, if you know, how many of the businesses have requested the use of the commercial revitalization?
I know of at least two, possibly three.
One of them would be that Hys that's being...
One of them is, we believe, the Hys. One of them is Mead Center, and I, oh, and the third one, yes, is Frank Smith's 1572 LLC.
And your belief is that if this was not passed, that this would have a disparate impact on them?
I do believe that it would. It was very difficult to make any of those projects work financially, and it did take the revitalization credit to make it work, and I'm concerned that they would be stopped. Mead Center particularly has had a very difficult time moving forward, and all of these areas were dilapidated buildings, very rundown areas. And so getting these areas revitalized is extremely important to the progress in the town center, and they're also directly across from Fort Mead, which, as you know, is booming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, I'm sure you have a word of wisdom for us. What do you have today?
Well, I remain confused and bewildered, but I also raise the question of, once again, we have developers, commercial interests, who want to redevelop property, and they want to be subsidized by the taxpayers.
That's something.
And I really raise the question of whether we can really afford this. You look around the community, you know, you have all of these other serious issues, and I'm just wondering, you know, it's like this black hole, you know, the money just disappears, you know, goes off into, you know, away from the taxpayers and into something, into government. And if you think about all, you know, the needs for housing, schools, transportation, and so forth, you know, if the property doesn't, you know, isn't going to work, then why develop at taxpayer expense, taxpayer subsidy? You know, there are a lot of, you know, well, I just feel, I think that there are serious questions about whether this is a fair, reasonable, and appropriate use of taxpayer funds. And I think that the council has to start, really start looking at the fact that our nation is $17 trillion in debt. The value of the dollar is plunging. For people who are over 50, there are a huge number of people who are unemployed or underemployed. Some of them are pretty desperate because those are people who have worked all their lives, and they have worked very hard. They've been frugal and good citizens. And I think there are just so many demands on government that there are serious questions about, is it really appropriate for the taxpayers to be subsidizing developers and commercial interests on questionable projects, projects that wouldn't survive without the taxpayer's support. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, let's see. Anybody else want to speak on 70, what is it, where am I, 7514? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
I'm Jim O'Hare.
Nice to meet you, Mr. O'Hare.
Nice to meet you. I live 140 Lafayette Avenue, Annapolis. I'm the developer of the Mead Center project, which is, as indicated, across 175 from Fort Mead. Our project is a 24,000-square-foot retail and office center, together with a 6,000-square-foot pad site restaurant. We have the restaurant pad site leased to the All American Steakhouse, and this, you may know them, they've got a location in Edgewater. This will be their sixth location. But we are ready to break ground. We're on the backside of a very lengthy permitting process, but we've recently signed our public works agreement. We're getting bonds in place, and we're ready to start construction. We have financing via Wells Fargo. The financing is predicated on our pro forma, and that pro forma includes the tax credit afforded to us because we're in the revitalization zone. And I can, to add color to the prior testimony, I can tell you that without that tax credit and a revised pro forma, our financing would be under, at the very least, reconsideration, and certainly would be threatened. And, you know, again, we are now at a point where we're ready to start construction. I would expect to break ground in a month from now. It's possible that we would lose our financing, but at the, in the best case, we would be delayed further.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on 7514? Forever holds your peace. All right, we're going to close 7514. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7514.
An ordinance concerning commercial revitalization district program.
Any other discussion in the council? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 7514.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 7514 is passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7614.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget supplemental appropriation grants special revenue fund.
Okay. Let's see who's going to come down and talk with us today.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Jessica Layes with the Budget Office. Bill 7614 provides appropriation authority to the Grant Special Revenue Fund for the Detention Center in recognition of the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, which is a block grant. The grant funding appropriated in this bill is from prior-year awards that have not been fully spent to date. As you heard in last week's work session from Terry Kokolas, the superintendent of the detention facilities, this money is going to be used for a software system to upgrade home detention, an electronic monitoring system, and for workforce recruitment and retention strategies. I have with me this evening Joyce Hall. Well, there is someone from the Detention Center here this evening if we have some more specific questions.
I think probably anybody does. I pretty much hit most of them in the workshop. Anybody have anything to say? Seeing no movement. Thank you so much. We're going to have a public hearing on 7614. If you want to come down and chime in. Seeing nobody jumping out of the seats. We're going to close public hearing on 7614. Okay, let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7614 as amended.
No, we haven't amended it yet, but I'll read the title. An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget supplemental appropriation grants special revenue fund.
Okay. And listen, we do have an amendment. So let's see. Madam Secretary, read amendment number one.
This amendment corrects the total amount of the supplemental appropriation.
Motion to adopt.
Salute.
And again, second.
Second.
Okay. And let's see. County Executive.
The proposed amendment corrects the grant total by $1.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer.
So we can amend this and then vote on it because it's emergency resolution?
Yes.
Correct.
So this wouldn't qualify as a technical amendment and a mistake. It's actually an adjustment.
Not technical, but since it's an emergency bill, you can still vote on it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, that was pretty simple. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is passed.
Okay, and for the record, since bill number 7614 is an emergency ordinance, it can be amended and voted on the same night. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7614 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7614 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7714.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget additional appropriation community development fund.
Okay.
Jessica Layes, Budget Office, and I have with me this evening Kathy Koch, who's the Executive Director for the Arundel Community Development Services. Bill 7714 provides $220,000 of additional appropriation authority to the Community Development Fund in recognition of additional grants that were received from the Maryland Energy Admission. Kathy can tell you a little bit about how we're going to spend that money.
$20,000 of the grant will be used to install a solar hot water system at the South Glen Burney Fire Station on Crane Highway in Glen Burney, and $200,000 of the grant will be used to install a 60-kilowatt rooftop solar system on the fire headquarters location in Millersville. This system will provide a portion of the building's onsite electrical demand. It's estimated that these two projects will save the county approximately $8,850 a year.
I like that. I like that. Every time I keep hearing this, I get all warm and fuzzy, you know what I mean? That's some good stuff. Okay, any questions from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Ladd.
Ms. Koch, when we go start putting these solar systems on there, has the county got the ability to maintain these solar systems, or does that go back to the contractors?
No, the county's actually going to own this one, and they're in the process of putting on a new roof on the building and incorporating the solar system with it.
I meant about the maintenance of the solar systems and the pumps and all that. That's something new. But we have the ability in place to start to take care of those in-house?
Yes, yes. So Central Services has been very, very much a part of the whole design and the choice of this project, yes.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing. We're now going to open it up on 7714 if anybody wants to come down and say something. How you doing again, Ms. Johnson? How are you? And what would you like to tell us?
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. As you know, I support alternative energies because of that, all forms of alternative energy, because I've talked to you about the global choke points for the, you know, transport of petroleum products. However, you do raise the important question of maintenance. With the boat show being here, I talk to boaters, you know, who say, well, they don't tell you that you have to scrub off the solar panels because the birds leave a lot of droppings. Seagulls leave big dropings. But at any rate, these are issues, not to mention the normal dust, you know, leaves another debris that may fall upon them. And so it's a very critical, it's an important issue, that I wonder whether you're, you know, calculating it in your total costs of training and maintain, you know, training the employees who are going to be doing this work, how you construct these things to make them accessible to physically getting to the panels in order to be able to clean them off. You know, and there are other related issues, but, you know, my time runs short. I guess I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody else want to come down and speak on 7714? Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're closing the public hearing on 7714. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7714 as amended.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget additional appropriation community development fund.
Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill 7714.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 7714 is passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 5914 as amended.
An ordinance concerning reserve fund for retiree health benefits and retiree health benefits trust.
Okay, we see the administration again. And Mr. Benoit is the sponsor.
Stand by, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Good evening. For the record, John Peterson, Deputy Personnel Officer. Mr. Hammond's close by. There we go.
Mr. Chairman, we debated this for some period of time. I guess, was it two meetings ago? It was the last September meeting. There was some disagreement about how to proceed on this matter. The bill represents what certainly, my view, how we should do things, and it's kind of the last part of getting the retiree health insurance issue behind us. In absent a bill from the administration, this would serve as a placeholder to be replaced if the administration chooses, if the next administration chooses not to bring anything down. We amended it last time. You'll recall to give the county some time to get its collective act together and decide how to proceed. But in the meantime, this would serve as a backstop should nothing happen. That's all I have.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, as Mr. Benoit said, we have continued to pursue this. There's another draft out there. We have made contact with the Board of Education, which was part of the discussion earlier about whether they want to join it. Have not heard back from them. And we clearly also need to have conversations with the employee groups as far as the representation of the trust, and we intend to do that. And, you know, the clock just ran out on us. So clearly, there's still the momentum as far as the current administration to see this through to the next administration and get this whole issue wrapped up. And I think that June 30th amendment is the tool that we can use to effectively keep the pressure on the next administration to get something done right and do it in a timely fashion. So we're in favor of that.
Okay. So you're okay with the bill? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, Roger that. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much. We're going to open up public hearing on 5914. Anybody want to chime in? Please feel free to come on down. Hello again, Ms. Johnson. You're on a roll tonight, aren't you? What's your take?
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Honestly, I haven't done my homework on this bill, but this is about employees' benefits. Somebody else doesn't know either because there are a lot of retired employees. I do not understand what has happened here, that you're tinkering with contractual benefits that were altered before. You know, the firefighters and the police department turned out before. There were disputes about what was being done, that there were promises made, and the promises were broken. And I view that as a breach of contract. But I'm not an attorney, and I don't know these things, but it seems to me as a layperson. I don't know what you're doing here, but I am appalled that no one invited anybody to represent any of the county employees on something about employee benefits. And I don't know who's responsible for inviting them, but whoever it is, I think that this is a serious breach of duty and responsibility to the employees who work long and hard. Some of them maybe don't work so long, maybe they don't work so hard. But, you know, they're public employees, and a lot of them work very hard and with a lot of dedication. And I don't think it's really quite fair to put forth a bill that's going to alter whatever their benefits may be, and potentially for decades. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, I have to put on the record.
You might want to clear that up, Ms. Johnson.
I need to do that, just for the public's benefit, that the bill that's in front of us right now actually works to the benefit of the county employees and was part of a, if it wasn't explicit, I think it was explicit, part of the explicit promise when we restructured health care benefits a few months ago, that we would effectively create a lockbox, Ms. Johnson, where the money can't be reached for any other purpose. That's what this bill does, is it locks the health care funds for the retirees into a place where it can't be used for any other purpose. So I'd hope that people would, I think, people would applaud that decision by this council should this bill pass.
Right. But you see, I'm really glad to hear that. That makes it considerably more happy. But why not have that policy discussion? Why not have those employees come and say, "Thank you, Mr. Benoit, for being concerned about us"? Why isn't this a more transparent operation? It's my only concern. Thank you, Mr. Grasso, for asking Mr. Benoit to clarify it. And so, anyway, thank you much.
Well, that was good, Ms. Johnson, because then we had a little bit of talk here, and everybody understood a little bit better. So thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to speak on 5914? Seeing no jumps out of the seat. Madam, we're going to close our public hearing on 5914. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 5914.
An ordinance concerning reserve fund for retiree health benefits and retiree health benefits trust.
And I can say as amended. Is there any discussion among the council? Seeing no movement in the crowd. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 5914.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 5914 as amended is passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6014 as amended.
An ordinance concerning planning and development master plan for water supply and sewage systems.
Okay, here they come. Good evening once again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I always like seeing you guys, man. You make me smile. I don't know what it is. Just make me happy. Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. For the record, I'm Larry Tom, Planning and Zoning Officer. With me is Lynn Miller, my long-range planning administrator. Bill 6014 was heard two weeks ago at your regular meeting then. Public hearing was conducted. The bill had been amended, and so I believe it's ready for your final vote. We have no additional testimony to offer tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Roger that. Okay, council. Seeing no movement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on, what hour are we, 60-14? Anybody want to come down here and say anything? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 60-14. Okay, Madam Secretary, let's see. Please read the title of bill 60-14 as amended.
An ordinance concerning planning and development master plan for water supply and sewage systems.
Once again, discussion in the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll of bill number 60-14 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 6014 as amended is passed.
All right. Stay put. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7414.
An ordinance concerning planning and development master plan for water supply and sewage systems.
Administration?
Thank you. Once again, Mr. Chairman, 74, is it 74?
Yeah, 7414.
7414 is another amendment to the Water Sewer Master Plan to accommodate the pending capital project for the Mayo Sewer System Solution.
Okay. Any questions in the council? Seeing no movement. Open up public hearing on 7414. Anyone want to chime in? Seeing no movement. Close the public hearing on 7414. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7414.
An ordinance concerning planning and development master plan for water supply and sewage systems.
Okay. Once again, any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7414.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill 6414 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6414.
An ordinance concerning public safety fire services ambulance service fee.
Okay, we already did public hearing on this, so, okay. Is there any discussion among the council? Okay. Administration want to say anything? They're not moving, so they're happy. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 6414.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill 6414 is passed.
Okay, that was pretty simple. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of --
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
I just wanted to say for the record that I remember some of the concerns that were raised during the work session about the soft billing and how that's a county policy, but isn't actually in code. And for the record, my intention is to, in the next term, to bring back a piece of legislation that will codify that to ensure that these dollars and cents that were generated by this will not be billed directly to county citizens. So, I just want to let folks know that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's good, Mr. Walker. I just want to go along with that also, that the people need to understand that the county will send out a couple notices, but it's not like they're going to send a collection agency. It's really probably more targets, so, more so for the insurance companies to develop some more money into the general fund to hopefully offset the volunteer fire department. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6614 as amended.
An ordinance concerning public works waiver of interest and penalties on delinquent utility fees.
All right. Call down the administration.
Good evening. Christine Romans with the Department of Public Works, joined by Julie Musaw, the county comptroller. Bill 6614, as you stated, allows the county to waive interest and penalties for ARC, capital facility connection fees or usage fees for commercial entities. The bill was amended at the last hearing, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody in the council want to say anything? Nope. Doesn't seem like it's a big subject with us today. Thank you very much. Okay, public hearing on 6614 is open if anybody wants to chime in. Seeing no movement. We're going to close the public hearing on 6614. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6614 as amended.
Mr. Grasso, we have somebody who wants to testify.
Yes. Ms. Johnson. Okay, Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry about that. Would you have safe words, Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis 21401. I just really don't understand why we are, you know, so willing to address or to relieve the burdens of those who are developers who owe the county money. And so, it appears to me that this is another one of those bills where, you know, you ask the taxpayers of the county to subsidize developers and what we developers and so forth. And I think there's some serious question for that, because if the project doesn't fly, why are we subsidizing it? Thanks a lot.
All right. So, we opened the public hearing. Once again, from Ms. Johnson, we closed the public hearing on 6614. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 6614 as amended.
An ordinance concerning public works waiver of interest and penalties on delinquent utility fees.
Once again, discussion in the council? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 6614.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 6614 as amended is passed.
Okay. Moving on down the lineup here. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6814.
An ordinance concerning real property taxes clean energy loan program and property tax surcharge.
Okay, and we have Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chair, we talked about this bill at length at our last meeting. We had representatives come down from private financiers as well as businesses that would benefit from this. In addition to an individual that has traveled the country setting up these clean energy programs, I'm not going to add much more than what we've already discussed, but I would encourage the council to pass this bill.
Administration, you say?
Barbara Wilkins, on behalf of the county executive. As we discussed earlier, we think this program is worthy of discussion, but there's not enough expertise within the county that we feel it's prudent right now to obligate ourselves to a program that we don't even know how to implement. And the county executive made a decision not to initiate any new programs and thought it was appropriate to defer to the next administration, and they can decide if implementing a clean energy program is a priority within the context of the interest within the commercial sector.
Okay. All right, so for the record, the administration's not in favor of that. Okay, that makes me sad. All right, we're going to open up public hearing on 6814. Anybody want to come in and say anything? Relaxing back there. Here we go. We got a few sign-up people over here. So, we have Ms. Jody Clark, and it looks like Mr. Gene Cordon, and Doug, I can't --
Eugene Condon.
Excuse my name for beating it up.
That's okay. Mr. Chair, actually, before they addressed the council, I did want to put on the record that there was a typographical error that was in amendment number three referencing an incorrect line number. You know, just like to note that for the record, and that the final bill will reflect that correction.
Roger that. Sir, please name and address.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Gene Condon, and I am at 234 Fennigan Drive in Millersville, Maryland. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I have brought with me some distinguished guests. Doug McMaron, who is heading up programs all across the country to develop Pace programs for numerous developers, and Jody Clark locally from Hanan Armstrong, a financial company that has loaned hundreds of millions of dollars, if not more, to various initiatives across the country as well. Just to briefly touch on Pace, Pace is a self-owner imposed property tax assessment lien. Owner imposed. It's enabled through legislation, and right now about 31 countries, 31 states across the country have passed similar programs, such that this year about $400 million will be loaned across the United States. Pace programs serve and further an essential public purpose. They include, but not limited to, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reducing energy and water consumption, encouraging economic stimulation and development, and improving property valuation, but most importantly, increasing employment. Pace financing is provided by private third-party lenders, and to the benefit of Ms. Johnson in the back, they are not provided by the government. Pace financing is secured with and paid back with a property tax assessment lien on the property owner, and the liens have the same status and utilize the same established efficient property tax assessment procedures in collection and default enforcement that exists today in the county. Pace interest rates are lower than traditional loans because of the secured position of the lenders, and Pace administration costs, governmental or private, are covered by and included in the financing costs. Pace is good. It's good for the environment. It's good for the community. It's good for the economy, and it's good for business, and I encourage your support. But we're here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, just sort of for the benefits of the people in the crowd, just to real symbol what this is. If you were to get a loan for solar panels, you would probably pay a higher interest rate because it's really not being secured. It's being secured against you and your words. What this company's saying is that you can get solar panels put on your house, but it's being secured with the actual assessment of the property. So, it's guaranteed, well, it's actually for businesses. It's guaranteed that their money is going to get paid because it's part of your tax bill. Thus, they don't have as high a risk, and businesses have a much lower interest rate. So, it seems like a very good benefit. Okay. I don't think anybody else has got any questions. Mr. Ladd?
Sir, is there any other jurisdiction in the state of Maryland that has this program up and running?
There are no other jurisdictions that have the program in place today. The program is just, the enabling legislation was passed earlier this year and went into effect October 1st of this year.
What about other states?
Yes, numerous other states.
What's the closest one, for example?
I would say Connecticut probably has the most robust program.
And what is their alternative source of energy that they use?
They don't really use, it's not about using an alternative. This applies for energy efficiency projects as well as renewable energy projects. So, it's anything that really saves energy, and as long as the savings exceed the cost of the debt that's put back on the property, which is basically positive cash flow to the property, it ends up being
What percentage of your projects that you've seen are performance-based, you know, efficiency-related contracts as opposed to things that are using alternative sources of energy?
Johnson, Ladd, just hold on a second. Ma'am, I just want to put your name on the record for us, please.
You bet. Jody Clark, and I'm with Hanan Armstrong, but I also am an Anarundel County resident.
Sorry about that, Mr. Ladd. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just curious, because when I look at this thing, there is two lines through this thing. That, which is just energy efficiency, better controls and all that, which has nothing to do with an alternative source or a green source of energy. And then there is others where you're looking strictly at alternative sources of energy. And the risk between the two in estimating where the savings come are quite different. And I'm just wondering, what percentage of the people work that you do has nothing to do with alternative sources of energy?
Mr. Chairman, Doug McMaron, Vale Energy Development, 1601 Red Canyon State Road, Edwards, Colorado. The whole premise of Pace is that you're financing basically self-liquidating debt, energy efficiency improvements that pay for themselves. That is, we're not financing any improvements, asphalt parking lots, things of that nature. These are LED lights. They are HVAC units. There is renewable. Your solar, the state legislation limits the solar, unfortunately, but for commercial. But it does, if you had combined heat and power, it would provide for financing for that. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to Mr. Condon's comments is that the ordinance and bill that you have before you is to enable a Pace program. The guidelines would be controlled by, I believe, your comptroller. So, the guidelines of how it's implemented, and I believe that's what maybe Ms. Wilkins' concern is, lies with your comptroller. And we have those guidelines. They're public guidelines, and we'd be glad to work and look forward to the opportunity if that is available.
Okay, you answered my question. Is there any impact if this adoption of this measure is delayed until the new administration comes in? Is there anything time sensitive about doing it tonight?
Well, yes. I think that, you know, this bill as provided does provide for some good greenhouse emissions controls, for some other savings of energy, water, things of that nature.
And take your answer, there's no impact. We could wait 90, 120 days.
Yes, sir. There is an impact. Anarundel Mills has an accessible $1.2 million lighting retrofit that they would like to accomplish.
Who is that?
Anarundel Mills, sorry.
Okay. Is somebody here from them?
That would be me.
Why is that so, why is that 90 days sensitive?
Well, it's an energy savings project. It is a project that is, would also include some participation from Baltimore Gas and Electric, that the rebates are available. Those programs can coexist with these Pace programs.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
You sort of addressed one of the issues that Ms. Wilkins brought up as an objection. I gathered from their testimony, there was two objections. One was the no new programs objection, which I understand is an outgoing administration. But the more significant one, I think, is the admin component of administering the program. From your perspective, and you've had a lot of experience in dealing with these, what sort of level of activity or level of involvement would the comptroller's office need to have? Do we set up an initial set of policies, and then the program sort of runs along smoothly? I mean, how many man-hours are we talking about or personnel? I think that's the issue or concern from their perspective also, is how many hours are we dedicating to this? And I understand that there is a component where we can charge an administrative fee to cover our costs, but their point's also valid in my mind, too, which is, you know, we're spread thin as it is and don't want to overburden that department. So, just curious, from your perspective, based on your experience with this, you know, they don't have the experience, you all do. What level of interaction have you had, in particular with governments that have not had experience with this before, and what level, are we talking months' worth of meetings? Are we talking a handful of meetings in the development of internal policies? Or what's the sort of process that the next administration's going to have to tackle, because that's basically who it's going to be if we were to pass this bill tonight?
That's a very valid concern. And the answer would be, the amount of time that it takes depends on how many businesses actually use the Pace program. I think the most important component is that this program pays for any costs that it burdens the government with, which is not too often you get that. So, that the property owner that makes that application would pay for any time, or if the county felt like they needed a reviewer, an engineer to review, a third party, the property owner would pay for that. The administration of a Pace program can really be as simple as checking the box. Did they submit this? Does the title there, is the application complete? Once the application's complete, then the property owner and the lender, in this case, Hanan Armstrong, would take the next step. And it can be, it can be as simple as it should be, or you can make it complicated and go, "Oh, my gosh, we have to hire a lot of staff and blah, blah, blah before we start this." And that's not the case at all. You can grow it organically, and you can grow it one project at a time with the property.
Other than Anarundel Mills, are you familiar with any other businesses in the county that are interested in participating in this immediately? At the present time, it's still in its infancy, and I think there's folks that are now learning about it in the various meetings that we've had across with other businesses. They've expressed an interest in taking advantage of it. I think that that's something that, as Mr. McMaron mentioned, will grow organically as people understand the opportunity exists, whether they be a small business in Pasadena or wherever. They truly can benefit from the program.
Can you give an example? The gentleman that was up here earlier with the Wells Fargo loan, I'm not sure what the project was. It was like 24,000 square feet. He could literally use part of this financing as part of his capital stack, thereby reducing Wells Fargo's contribution. He could use Pace to help finance the energy efficiency improvements that includes his roof, his HVAC. roof, his HVAC, water improvements, things of that nature. So he, I know he doesn't know about it, but if the council passes it, you still have all the controls within the guidelines of, you know, telling, you know, what can be done and what cannot be done, with the costs being burdened by the property owners.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, addressing another part of your question, and what Ms. Wilkins sort glazed over without mentioning, was that within this bill, it does indicate that the county, the county executive can enter into an agreement with a private entity that will administer the program for the county, and that cost will be borne by the participants of the program.
And the way this is being set up, to me, it sounds very similar to an SCBD, where we're just creating an extra line item on the property tax bill that's being paid by that property owner, at the property owner's request. Fair enough. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving along. Thank you very much, and I think you guys got a nice project going here. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on 68... Was that public hearing? You're right. Sorry about that. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 6814. Is there any more discussion? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 6814 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
Aye.
Mr. Ladd?
No.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 6814 as amended is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7214 as amended.
An ordinance concerning public works, roads, traffic control, signal monitoring systems.
Okay, this is my bill. I'll make it short and sweet to the gun. No pun intended. What I basically want to do here, folks, I just felt red light cameras weren't giving enough benefit for me for a bang for the buck. I looked at the charts that I saw, and it seems like in situations, it looked like rear-ended accidents increased because people would slam the brakes. And then, on the same token, people speed up when there's a camera. My issue was real simple, I just felt that it's a bounty hunting system. The only vehicle, the people aren't getting fines here, it's not even the people, it's the vehicle. So whoever drives the vehicle, that vehicle is the one actually getting attacked, is actually getting the fine. So the question really comes to my mind is, is it really doing anything because it's just fine the vehicle? So my suggestion was, instead of trying to dip into the people's pockets, I just thought the better way to handle things was just to turn around and just increase the time factors. You know, let the yellow lights stay a little bit longer, or the red lights stay a little bit longer. Instead of asking people, basically, they go speeding through it, and we nail them with the fine, and we don't nail the purse, we nail the vehicle, and take money from people that are having a hard enough time paying their bills now. And yes, it was going to draw money for the county at about $300,000, around two-thirds of a $75 ticket, and to me, like I said once before, I think it's just a bounty hunting system. Mr. Jones turned around and put an amendment in, seeing as the council put amendment in, and we weren't in favor of all my thoughts, and administration has. Go ahead.
Lieutenant Scott Davis, Special Operations Division. Anything, the department's position really hasn't changed on the bill, and we oppose the bill.
Okay. All right. No more discussion on the council. We're going to open up a public hearing on 7214. If someone wants to come down and say something, it comes with Ms. Faithfull. Good evening, once again, Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I actually did do my homework on this one. And I thought I sent you an email, but maybe I only drafted it and didn't send it to you. Rahm Emanuel, the mayor of Chicago, got in trouble with red light because, with the red light tickets, because they were anticipating a generated revenue of $90 million, and the drivers in Chicago modified their behavior, and they only generated $40 million. And now the city of Chicago is $50 million in the hole, and they're going to have to find new sources of revenue. And in that same article, they quoted a studies conducted by some universities, and my senior moments, again, I can't remember which universities they were, but they did do studies, and they did find that, generally speaking, you know, I mean, when the nation, with the surveys that conducted in a variety of different places, you know, they did not have the safety impact that everybody had hoped for and everybody anticipated. Now, I remember at the last meeting, you know, the vendors, you know, witness testified that, in fact, that there have been new safety improvements at these particular intersections. But that may be an anomaly, but again, it doesn't necessarily generate the revenue that people were hoping to get, and it was clear that the mayor of Chicago, Mayor Rahm Emanuel, is really in a bind, and the journalists are really, really giving him a hard time. So is everybody else. Where are you going to get $50 million?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, anybody else want to come speak on 7214? Public hearing on 7214 is closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7214 as amended.
An ordinance concerning public works, roads, traffic control, signal monitoring systems.
Any more discussion with the council? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 7214 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
No.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill 7214 as amended is passed.
Okay. Let's see, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7814.
An ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public facilities, roads.
Mr. Ladd, you're on.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is fairly straightforward. We have previously identified in Districts 3, 6, and 7, a number of areas geographically that were peninsula in performance with respect to road access. After looking at the situation for well over a year, I wanted to add District 5, there were two basic areas which have peninsula characteristics, it's areas that, part of the Naval Academy, Point Pleasant Road, part of Amberly, that are listed in the bill, and which come off the roads, coming off the peninsulas, empty out onto St. Margaret's Road. And in the other case, it's areas over on Cape St. Clair and Shore Acres, which come up out of the peninsulas and exit off via the College Parkway. And I'm putting that in there because it, those communities need the protection and the considerations, just as the other districts do, and I've discussed this with Mr. Tom, and I think he and I have agreed to disagree on this matter.
I agree to disagree.
And I would say that I think it's fair for the districts that I've got, and it doesn't change the adequate public facilities law in terms of what's required, it's just how far and extensive you have to go and look at the intersections for capacity. Mr. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, for the record again, Larry Tomplining, as only officer. Mr. Ladd characterized that quite succinctly. We have agreed to disagree on this bill. My main concern with the bill is, if you look at the provisions of the code under 175403, when the five peninsula roads that are identified in this section of the code was established by the council under Bill 8311, which was adopted in early 2012, there was significant deliberation, significant considerations as to what peninsulas, what corridors were to be part of this. And I think the five corridors that were established clearly recognizes that these are corridors that serve as the only means of ingress and egress from these peninsulas. What Mr. Ladd is proposing to do here under this particular bill, 7814, I think kind of overreaches a little bit. And I say this because if you look at the roads that he's considering as part of this bill, there are actually more than one way in and out. So it just seems to make no sense to me. And, you know, I have some concerns because it's going to add some additional testing requirements for adequacy of public roads, which in my opinion is not warranted.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While you were speaking, Mr. Tom, I brought up a map, you know, Google Maps, pretty amazing these days. But I see what you're saying, and I appreciate your concerns, and I'm wondering if an alternative way to go about what Mr. Ladd is proposing to do would be to develop some sort of like peninsula overlay layer that wouldn't be completely contingent on, you know, which roads go exactly where. Because I, you know, I represent a lot of peninsula area in my own district, and I, you know, mine already is established.
That's right.
And while I agree with you that the areas that Mr. Ladd has detailed in his proposal aren't quite apples to apples, I do think all of us that represent areas that are inherently on a peninsula of some sort are worried about this. And so, you know, we're not going to address this today, and it's probably more of a comprehensive effort, but I just wanted to ask, beyond the current provision where the peninsulas are outlined specifically in 175403, what would your general thoughts be of a future, more comprehensive effort in looking more holistically at some of these peninsula challenges? Is it time to open the books on that, or should we leave good enough alone?
Well, those are good points, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you.
And frankly, it is worth further discussion and further study, whether or not that's part of the 2019 GDP effort, that, you know, that might be appropriate. But, you know, it's not just an issue of traffic.
Right.
You really have to look at land use patterns, you have to weigh future development and redevelopment against other goals and policies in the general development plan.
Okay.
But it's worth, it's worth further discussion.
Okay. So if I could summarize what I think you're saying is, it might be time to look under the hood again in the future at this more comprehensive. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Ladd.
I don't disagree. We, with the thrust and the need to look more broadly at a lot of these roads, but part of the problem is that, we look at St. Margaret's, it's a state scenic and historic road, and that road is not probably going to get increased in capacity. And so the problem is slightly different here, and so I, you and I have talked, Larry, there's a lot of things on the road networks.
Sure.
And my, one of my only regrets about my last meeting is that I won't be able to try to work with you to try to find some solutions to the county road situation. You and I spent lots of hours on this thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I do think that, for the sake of the people that are there, extending to them the courtesy of having the same level of scrutiny that these other ones are getting, particularly when there are some fairly large tracts of land in there, very attractive tracts of land, that could be developed. And I, and I do, I am concerned about this, a tip of hat to the effectiveness of the development community that can find ways to break what appears to be pretty well-conditioned property that's not going to be available, to find a way to get it available. So I am concerned about my constituents.
Understood.
And particularly not overloading all of the other roads, in case we have a problem. I agree that there are two ways out, but the problem is, there are two ways out on all of these, and they all lead to the roads that everybody else is trying to get on. So that's what's important about going out a couple, two or three stoplights.
Right.
So I don't think I'm asking for any protection or consideration from my district that's any different or more than the other districts, it's just we're in a slightly different place, but we're on a peninsula.
Right. And I certainly agree with you and Mr. Trumbauer that the peninsulas, you know, great some special attention, there's a need for that. But I'm just not sure, I'm not convinced that this bill is the solution or the salvation.
Well, it's a placeholder, and I regret that I won't be here to try to help further refine it, and I hope everybody will pass that, and if it's, if there is a better solution, I think my successor will be glad to applaud that and join you in that. Thank you.
Roger that. Okay, moving forward, thank you, Larry Tom.
Thank you.
Public hearing on 7814 is now open, if anybody wants to chime in. Seeing the movement in the crowd, public hearing on...
The developers.
The developers, of course.
My breakfast partners were going.
Breakfast partners. Okay, just so you know the drill, name and address, please.
Jim Craft. I'm at 175 Admiral Cochran Drive in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here representing the Maryland Builders Industry Association, formerly Home Builders Group. On behalf of the industry, we're here to oppose this bill for two primary reasons. I think that the first of which that we hadn't touched on yet is there, there's an impact to scenic and historic roads, that component is in this bill. And we feel as an industry that there's already 14 comprehensive points in the code that govern development on scenic and historic road. So we feel that this bill might, it really extends beyond what's really necessary for governing development on those types of roads. The other piece is that, as Mr. Tom touched on, we think that this probably has a broader impact than what's truly intended. We understand that the primary issue is to also focus on road improvements in certain pockets of the county. And from a development and mitigation standpoint, we feel that adequate public facility test is currently in place that allows for adequate mitigation, and if those dollars properly funneled can go towards those road improvement projects. So we don't feel that this bill adequately addresses that concern. And then the following point is that, while APF for roads may need some fine tuning, you know, we'd certainly be open to working with the administration in the future to more comprehensively looking at this part of the code, but we don't think that this legislation is the solution to that problem at this time. So, thank you very much.
Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elliot Powell with the Maryland Building Industry Association also. Couple of points. One, there was really no study that was done to establish the impacted area. So it is a very large area, it's many square miles of real estate, and yet there was no transportation analysis that was done to create this overlay zone. It's effectively a de facto down zoning of these properties, and I guess the greatest concern I have here is that there's a lot of people on property out there that are impacted by this overlay zone, that are totally unaware of what's happening to their property rights. So I have a grave concern that there are many, big and small, not just developers, but individual property owners, that have no idea that this, the passage of 7814 would impact their properties. The county has a mitigation testing process. It's not perfect, but it's pretty exhaustive, and I agree with Mr. Tom's comment that a new study of this is perhaps in line in the future, but as it stands now, as far as the industry association is concerned, we do not believe it warrants passage. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like a plan to me.
Oh, I appreciate the conversation you had this morning, and the willingness to work with the county on some of these issues. And just to put the context, so that people understand, we have, of the roads in this county, 20% of the roads put 80% of the miles, and those are the state roads. The roads that we're talking about here are the 80% of the roads that pavement in the county, that the county owns, that do 20% of the miles. That's what we're trying to do, and there is some shortfalls in that, as was outlined. There is a need to look at that because that part of the adequate public facilities thing is the only thing that is left kind of dangling without some means of adequate support or financing. People argue we have impact funds, but I would tell you that it's very hard to find the plan that says how that money is going to be spent. So again, this is not my last gasp in trying to do it, but this is a placeholder, and if it forces the issue to look at adequate public facilities and roads, that's a wonderful side product. And I've looked at where the available property, yes, there is property that can be developed. I don't quibble with that. But it's, we've just got to start looking at this thing a little bit more clearly, and I'll get off my soapbox about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Roger that. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we opened up public hearing on, no, where was I? 7814. Anybody wants to come down and chime in?
Yep.
Anymore? Okay, done. Sorry about that. Repeat it. 7814 public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion on the council? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 7814.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Fink?
No.
Mr. Benoit?
No.
Mr. Ladd?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Bill 7814 is defeated.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7914.
An ordinance concerning zoning, non-conforming uses, limitations.
Okay, John Grasso, hour again. This bill came about, was pretty... Okay, John Grosso, hour again. This bill came about, was pretty simple. There was a gentleman, Mr. Wilbur, who lived on Albarek Road. This gentleman's probably over 70 years old, and I guess in his younger years also had his hand cut off. And could have been probably one of these type of people that live on disability and live off the government. But this guy chooses to turn around and open up a machine shop in the back of his house, and he's in a residential neighborhood, and he's been there for 26 years with several employees. And needless to say, his place catches on fire, so he musters the money together, and he puts it back up again. And after he's got it all up and running, the county stumps across him. And the county says to him, you got to close it down. You operate the business in a nonconforming neighborhood. 26 years, folks, several employees. So I think the argument got to be, is the county said to the fact that if you can prove you've been here for 30 years, and if he's on this list of, list of special exception, he gets to keep his business open. Me, I got a lot of heartache with that, because I figured someone that could have sat on the government, sponged off of it, took the initiative, created a business, has been there for 26 years, and we got to, and he's got to prove that he's been there for 30. And my feelings are, is I don't know what I did last week, more or less 26 years ago. So we passed, the council passed the law, and dropped it down from 30 years to 10 years. I called it the entrepreneur bill. And I explained to everybody that jobs are created by small businesses, and small businesses need a breeding ground, and that's, believe it or not, in neighborhoods. And I think a long story short, I started a wholesale meat business in my kitchen, bone and chickens. Okay? I didn't have the money to go to a storefront. And thus Chesapeake Foods was born, and built the business, and I sold the company. So I knew what it's like to start a business. Well, anyway, we got Mr. Wilbur's in this situation, that if this bill doesn't pass, and the next council doesn't do something about it, to come up with another way, Mr. Benoit came up with a great suggestion and of how we could fix it. But if it doesn't pass, we're going to put a 70-year-old man out of business and several employees. And I got a lot of problems with that. Okay? So the administration's going to have their take on it, and they're pretty much going to say, we're opening up all kinds of avenues for all kinds of illegal businesses to open up in neighborhoods. They call them illegal businesses, derisal list of businesses that they do allow, like bookkeeping and accounting offices, that kind of stuff. The administration calls it illegal businesses. Unfortunately, I have a different word. I call it entrepreneurialism. I think that's the way you create business in America, is someone's basement under armor, someone's garage, Microsoft, someone's kitchen, Annie's cookies. That's how businesses create. But evidently, my colleagues have been getting phone calls or emails from a lot of people saying, oh my God, we're going to let all these businesses open up. But my bill was pretty clear that if they can operate for 10 years and not have any problems, then why wouldn't we let them keep on going? And so most of my colleagues says, well, we're basically inviting illegal businesses to open up. I don't call it illegal. I call it opportunity. And that's the difference between me and what I've got and some of the other people. Administration, what do you have to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, I'm Larry Tom, playing the zoning officer. With me is Greg Swain from the Office of Law, and Lori Rhodes, my zoning administrator. If I may be so bold, I think this is a bill where, Mr. Grosso, you and I are going to disagree, agree to disagree. I just want to point out one thing, and that is the definition in our code for a nonconforming use. And it says very succinctly, a nonconforming use means a use that was allowed when it came into existence, but is no longer allowed under the law in effect in the zoning district in which the use is located. And what this bill does, in my opinion, is it ignores this definition and says, you can have a use that is not compatible with your surrounding property owners, and that's okay. All right? But it wasn't legal. And that's my whole problem with the bill.
Well, I think one of my colleagues says it's pretty much catch me if you can. Keep this in mind, folks, that this business has to operate, if they operate for 10 years and don't cause any problems, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we let them go? Who cares if they're illegal? If they could do it that quietly and not cause any problems with their neighborhoods for 10 years, don't we owe them the respect to let them continue what they're doing? That's all I'm going to say about that. Okay. I think everybody else has pretty much had their opinion about it. I thank you very much. We're going to open up a public hearing on 7014. Anybody wants to chime in? 7914, and tell us how you feel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Liza Solomon. I live at 1833 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard in Annapolis, and I'm here in opposition to Council Bill 7914. And I want to tell you a little bit about my situation, because I think my situation is very similar to what you describe, and I would be forced to deal with the problems of basically having an illegal property declared legal. So I live in the St. Margaret's area, which is a lovely area. It's zoned for residential one-acre houses. And many of us moved to this area because we like the density, we like the large lots, we like the sort of character of the neighborhood. However, I have a neighbor who doesn't really care about the zoning or the character of the neighborhood, and has decided that he wants to have, this is a small business, by the way, similar to what you may have described, but he has had six apartments in his single-family house and in the garage. And this clearly is very different than the character of the neighborhood or what we want in the neighborhood. So what I have done is I have restarted reporting it to the zoning board. So in 2010, I lodged a complaint with the zoning board. In 2011, the county decided it was, did not comply with the nonconforming use and found in my favor. In, again, then, in 2011, the neighbor filed an appeal to the appeals, the Board of Appeals. In 2012, the Board of Appeals dismissed the appeal. Later in 2012, the neighbor filed another nonconforming use. Later in 2012, the county denied the next nonconforming use, and the neighbor filed an appeal. The board dismissed the appeal, and the neighbor asked for a judicial review. In 2013 now, the circuit court affirmed the board's decision. In 2014, the Board of Special Appeals affirmed the decision. He filed for another nonconforming use. You get the picture. It's still going on.
Please, someone, ma'am.
The situation that you have offered as a bill would basically make this person's legal, because 10 years would have not gone by since when the first complaint came in. So why would you want to create a situation where the zoning laws mean nothing? Our neighborhoods, we cannot count on knowing what our neighborhoods would be like, and basically say it's okay to be illegal, even in spite of complaints? I really ask you, on the part of neighbors that do actually comply with the law, that you protect us and not just create a bill that would take away any of the rights that we have within the zoning laws.
Fair enough. Thank you, madam. Okay, Ms. Johnson, we'll start from you, and we'll go to the right.
Can I ask you to go the other way, please?
Okay, that's fine. I got, now I have Ms. Lisa Solomon, that is-
I'm Liza Solomon.
You're her. Okay, that's the only one I have on the sign-up sheet. Okay, so we'll go this way, then.
My name is Lisa Bender, 712 Shore Road, Severnham Park, Maryland, 21146. I am just a little concerned about this bill could be, as it's written and crafted, could open up a Pandora's box of possible use in residential areas. I'm, rewarding illegal activity with legitimacy after getting away with it for X amount of time does not seem like a good idea for government to promote. I don't have, I don't care if somebody is fixing a small, I'm not against a small home-based business that are not unobtrusive or wouldn't, wouldn't be noticed that much, but I would be concerned that legitimizing illegal zoning could be allowing expansion that may become intrusive or inappropriate in residential and community areas. I don't really care if somebody is fixing a small appliances in their basement, but if legit, if legalizing that property zoning seems to be allowing the expansion to increase a small business into a larger commercial venture, venture, that may become inappropriate, that may not be appropriate in a community. And I also worry that the bill, if passed and publicized, then could allow people to begin to set up a small business, get away with it for 10 years, and then become very intrusive or very destructive within a small community. My community's lots are like 25 or 50 by 100. You're right next door to each other.
You wouldn't know it for 10 years if somebody was doing something.
Oh, I know some people are doing something. If they're intrusive, they're small, okay. But if legitimizing them gives them the opportunity to expand, then it could become a problem within our community. You know, if our, my house caught fire, I'm seven feet from my other, my neighbors. That could be very dangerous. I'm not doing anything, but it could be. Anyway, I just think to consider some of the possible down-the-road effects.
Good evening, morning, Carayork. I live in Millersville. I oppose this bill because I really don't think we need to be rewarding illegal behavior. We have a pretty clear definition of nonconforming use in our code, and to approve this particular bill would be to throw that out the window. It has to be a legal use in order to comply with the requirements. And lowering the number of years to 10 years, well, you know, there's, there's always a situation where there is a hard case making bad law. It's an old saying in the law. And the heartrending tale of the individual who's trying to make a living and is two strikes against him to start with, is going to trip all kinds of emotional reactions, but it's not the way we should be making our laws, in my opinion. So I oppose the bill.
Ma'am?
Pat Lynch, 1648 Homewood Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm opposed to this bill. I feel that we are sanctioning the establishment of nonconforming and illegal use of a business or businesses. If this bill is passed, it may encourage, I would think it would encourage residents to ignore the law and work surreptitiously and covertly in order to cover up the activities. And it's happened in my own neighborhood, where a business started out in a closet and grew and grew and grew. And at that point, and this was over about a 10-year period, John, it almost became too late to stop the gentleman. We had, in a residential area, we had eight trucks, earth movers, et cetera, and we finally had to cause some problems and come to the county and say, we need help. So I am not, I am absolutely opposed to this bill.
Fair enough. Can I just ask one question to all of you? Do you all own businesses by any chance? I don't think so. Okay.
My family did.
Anybody else want to come down and speak?
Even if I don't own a business, Mr. Chairman.
Well, because it's, I guess maybe the issue might be, madam, is that I've been there, done that, and I know what I had to go through. So sometimes when you've been there, done that, then you recognize the situation. But everybody's entitled to their opinion, and it'd be interesting if I had someone that was up here that actually started a business up from the ground and actually spoke than a bunch of folks that just currently don't own businesses. So I'm just trying to get a different flavor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to jump in here. There are two components to this discussion. One is the businesses, and the other is residences. And, and so, talked about having residences in there. In the case that you and I are familiar with, part of the problem was the apartments overhead above the workshop. And there are other examples where we see violations of people having apartments, operating bed and breakfast inns, which are outside the code. And, and it's very hard to prove that, but I have, know lots of places in my district where people seriously suspect that, but we can't prove it. And so there was a dichotomy in how these rules and work and code plays out between dwellings and residences and businesses. And some people are operating apartment businesses, but it's right, they're, you know, it's not family. And so I've got problems in how and where that fault line occurs. So I, I agree with them in the sense that they're all concerned about the residential side, not necessarily the business, and they're equally important.
Ms. Johnson, you want to chime in?
Yes, sir, please. Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I think the other witnesses have testified to a very important aspect of the problem, that you want, you want citizens to comply with the law. Conversely, I live in a community where, when it was originally founded, the, it was virtually all combinations of residences and businesses. The upholsterer, the electrician, the plumber, the roofer, and so on. And, you know, everybody got along well, because everybody had a mutual concern and mutual involvement. Everybody needs the plumber and occasionally the electrician. You know, I mean, so there was a cohesion to the community that was valuable. I think that there is another issue that you need to look forward to, and that is the fact that there are so many people who are over 50 who cannot find people who will hire them at a livable wage, that some of these people are really hard-pressed to figure out what they're going to do in order to keep from losing their homes, paying for their cars, and so on. Shoot, there was something else. So I guess, oh, what I did want to say is, I appreciate your concern about a citizen or a constituent in the community. I think there must be some mechanism to address this kind of situation, because if the man's been there for 26 years, and he's been able to survive with his neighbors, then surely there, whatever he was doing could not be that horrible that they could not manage to endure, you know, for some period of time longer. Because if he's aged 70, how many more decades do you anticipate his operating a business and, you know, and hiring, you know, maintaining employees? So if that, if the bill doesn't work, then at least we need to find another mechanism to address the other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for coming down. I appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak on 7914? Please feel free to come down. Ms. Snowden?
Now it's on, yeah. Yeah, I'm one of those. I started my electrical business out of my home, and my, it come down to the point where, I mean, my neighbors didn't know I was doing it. It didn't really matter to them either. There's a certain way that, you know, if you've got your business running out of your home, you want to conduct it in a proper way, so it doesn't interfere with your neighbors and all that. And I never had any problem, never had any complaints. The way this bill's set up, that is if, I'm assuming it's talking about certain businesses. I mean, if it's, if it's in an apartment and the people aren't disturbing the people around them, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, our whole system of business in this country is based on the free enterprise system, so I think that's what we ought to bear in mind. And so therefore, like I say, if this bill's designed to just limit people that are, limit certain limitations of what they can and can't do, you know, I got, I got a problem with that. I mean, because most people that are trying to run a business out of their home is, you know, they're doing everything they can legitimately to keep it running, to keep it profitable. And if you're going to limit them, then you're going to end up hurting what they're trying to do. All right, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 7914. Madam Secretary, let's see, please read the bill on 7914.
An Order Concerning Zoning Nonconforming Uses Limitations.
Any discussion? I'm going to say to my colleagues once again, everybody up here talks about jobs, jobs, jobs. The jobs just don't come out of the sky. You've got to create a breeding job, a breeding place for jobs, and that is small businesses. That's how jobs are created. Not everybody has mad money to open up a storefront and get going. Now, there are provisions in the Antioch County Code that does allow certain categories to do that, but there's not enough of them. So we're either going to add categories to it, or we're going to have to make exceptions, because if you want to create jobs, you've got to create small businesses. And that's just the way, pretty much how it works. Everyone knows the backbone of the economy is small businesses. And the question is, do you want the jobs, or you don't? I had a situation in the county, it wasn't here, it was in Baltimore County. I had an apartment building, two units, separate electric meters, separate gas meters, in a regular rental community, and I had the housing inspector show up to me 20 years after I'm operating, telling me that I got to close my row home down that's had two gas meters and two electric meters for 20 years. In fact, I got a bank loan because I had two units in this property. Then he made me go out and solicit- Then he made me go out and solicit the whole neighborhood until I could find someone that could testify or write a letter, sign it, have it certified, that that building was there at least 30 years, operating as an apartment. Now, I was already going for 20, but they came at me, wanted me to get someone for 30 years to show that my apartments were there. I think that's some crazy stuff, folks. You can't have jobs and not allow a breeding ground for small businesses to grow. It's like oil and vinegar. They don't go together, okay? It's one or the other. And yes, there's going to be situations, there's no doubt of that. That's all I'm going to say about it. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7914.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Benoit?
No.
Mr. Ladd?
No.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Bill 7914 is defeated.
Okay, let's see what we've got here. This ought to be an interesting such a situation. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill, 7314.
And ordinance concerning United States Naval Academy Dairy Farm approving sublease to Sunrise Farm LLC.
All right, and we have Mr. Epps and Ms. Smith. Come on down. Good evening, once again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. It's a pleasure to be here again before you talk.
It seemed like we just did this, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I don't think the council's going to have any questions that I'm aware of. So you might have just sat in that seat and just warmed it up for all the people that are going to come and have to say what they got to say.
Okay.
Any questions in the council? Seeing none. Mr. Trumbauer, your point?
Just one question. I just want to get it on the record because it wasn't resolved at the last, we had a work session on this, I guess, about a week ago. And there's still some, there's some disagreement with regard to the sublease that the tenant has executed with another user. And the Office of Law took one position that effectively the council would be novating the lease by passing this bill, and Central Services took the position that it, as an agency, didn't think in, in its view that we would be. Has the administration sort of coalesced around one?
I believe that we have, Mr. Benoit. We had the, remember if the issue was that we had not approved, I had not approved the sub, sub, sublease because it did not conform to the terms of our lease with the Navy nor our sublease with Sunrise Farms. We did, through the assistance of the Office of Law, craft language that did bring it into conformity. And both Sunrise and Ebtide did sign that amendment this past weekend, submitted that to us. And so, if the council should choose to pass the bill and if that also constitutes approving the sub-sublease, then that sub-sublease is in conformity with the two other leases.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Respect.
Thank you. I'm having a real difficult time with this lease. The whole property seems like it's been a boondoggle from day one. You know, somehow, the county signed a lease for $250,000 roughly for 30 years, and we thought it was $250,000 over the course of 30 years. I mean, how we made that mistake? And then coming into this lease, did we know about the, the sublease at the time of agreeing to this lease? Did the administration realize that?
No, we, that came about, we became aware that Ebtide was there. We had not seen the formal lease until, or the formal agreement between the two until early September. They entered into that agreement in January of this year. Ebtide actually started as part of Sunrise Farms. It was an agreement between the owners of Sunrise Farms and the owner of Ebtide. And they started an agreement, and as I understand it, the program or the functions, the horse boarding was actually, the financing for a large portion of it was supplied by Sunrise. So there was no separate business entity until they finalized, the Ebtide program grew, and they actually entered into a formal agreement in January of this year. Per the terms of their lease, they should have, at that time, provided that agreement to the county for review and approval, and we in turn would have provided it to the Navy for the same. They did not. We did not, as I said, was not aware, we were not aware of it. And for us, the biggest issue was making sure that it conformed.
Yeah. So is your, your thought that they were hiding it, or they just didn't realize they had to make the county aware of it?
I don't think that they were intentionally hiding it.
Sure.
I think that, as with any businessperson, that in private business for themselves, that through the process of the LOI and so forth, it's not something that they would jump up and down about or publicize, brag about their financial arrangements, no more than they tell us how much they sold their crops for.
Sure.
Or how much they sold their beef for. That was not
Okay.
of a concern of ours. But becoming aware of it, it was a matter for us of making sure that it conformed with the terms.
How many acres is the total property?
About 857 acres.
And how many acres is the sublease for?
Sublease is for 857 acre, oh, the sublease.
Sub.
Sub, the sub-sublease.
Sub-sub, sorry.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Flynn to verify that amount. It's a small portion.
The horse pasture is about nine acres, if memory serves correctly.
Nine acres?
Yes.
Okay. And who came up with the $25,000 number?
That's something that the administration came up, we came up with that.
So the administration--
We raised the, the prior lease agreement with Sunrise had been, I believe, $20,000 a year. We saw fit to raise that, and that was a minimum. When we went out for solicitations for bids, we did not specify that we wanted $25,000. That was the minimum. And it was our hope that we would have had numerous proposals submitted and that one of the factors that we would have considered in choosing the selectee for the lease would have been the one that offered the best financial position for the county.
So how is it that we're going to give, I mean, we're going to rent this piece of property $25,000 for 857 acres, but yet the market shows that nine acres is worth $52,000?
Well, because the nine acres is part of the 850 acres. The fact of the matter is that if you're going to be responsible for operating the entire 857 acres, and you have numerous restrictions, you have to, you know, all of that 857 acres is not revenue-producing. And you're going to, if you're smart, you're going to have a business plan and a financial plan as part of that. That $52,000 that Ebtide is providing to Sunrise Farms is only one portion of their total revenue stream, which is offset by all of the expenses that they pay. It is testimony to that, I consider, the fact that Ebtide did not see fit to submit a proposal to pay the county $25,000 a year because they realized that the total expenses that they would have had to lay out to operate the 857 acres would have been far more than the $52,000.
Realizing that this whole property has, you know, just been a, been a nightmare, I guess, in all reality, the fact that we're paying a quarter of a million dollars, why wouldn't we just give it back to the Navy? I mean, my understanding is the lease says if the council doesn't fund it, the Navy will take it back, no hard feelings. It is what it is.
You read the, I believe you read the lease with the Navy correctly. Why we don't do that, that's a council decision, sir. I don't know, I can't speak for why the county council has not chosen to do that since the lease with the Navy was entered into. Until then, that council decides to do that, we are responsible for the lease payments of $240,000 a year and the maintenance and upkeep of the property. It is, therefore, we feel to our advantage, to the administration's advantage, to have an operator who takes on the bulk of that responsibility. If we did not have that, if the council chose not to approve the lease with Sunrise or any other operator, does not believe us of the 857 acres and the 38-year lease.
I guess it just seems to me that we are, we, the county taxpayers, are going to subsidize a for-profit business there. You know, it's not like these are baseball fields and the county residents are going to be able to use, um, West County kids are going to be on the park being able to use that, that, you know, those fields. It's coming down for a for-profit business going in there. They're subleasing it, making double their rent on us. Then they're going to run their business as usual while the county is paying not only their rent, but an additional, you know, $200,000 a year for them to be able to do that. I just can't imagine why the county would get into that at all.
Why the county would lease it, sublease it, or why the county would lease the--
Why one, we would take on that property--
Or why the county would enter into the lease with the Navy? I'm not sure which, which, what is your question?
Any and all of it.
Well, again, as I spoke, and I can't speak for the--
Have we--
Why the county would enter the lease with the Navy.
Got you.
I can speak to, as I said, the advantage of us having an operator. We did, in the documents that I provided to the council, lay out what, an estimate of what we felt the cost of not having a sublease would be to the county.
Have we had any conversations with our senators about maybe relaxing the, what's prohibited on that, that property? I mean, we've talked to Bart McCoskey or Ben Carden or the congressman, or I guess it's Congresswoman over there, about, you know, maybe the federal law allowing us to put baseball fields or some other open space-type activities on that property?
The administration has been in touch with Senator McCoskey's office recently. Myself and Mr. Anthony and other team members here had a conference call with the Navy on this past Friday regarding several issues around the dairy farm. One of the things that we asked them about was their willingness to entertain renegotiations of the lease, considering would they be open to extending the length of the lease and renegotiating the annual lease rates. Their response at that time, of course, with the people that we had on the phone, was that there was nobody on the phone who was willing to make that decision at that point in time, that a formal request from the county would be processed and staffed, and they would get back to us on that.
Has any conversation been with McCoskey about freeing up what's allowed on that property specifically?
Well--
Now, I would think that the county could go over the cost, get over the term of the lease if it was used for a public use. If we had, you know, 10 baseball fields, some soccer fields, a lacrosse field, multipurpose fields, the horse track, or the horse, trails. Trels, if you will. You know, then maybe that would make sense. But to have a for-profit business in there, it just seems--
For the record, Rick Anthony, Director of Wreckin Parks. And, you know, first of all, this was inherited from all of us here. I think outside of Mehdi, I'm the one that's been involved in this. And I think there's two separate issues. I understand your concern with the property, and I do believe that that will have an opportunity to address those issues. But for a long time, the Fryes have been our main people there on the ground and being the caretakers of the property. So in the meantime, as far as operationally, they have been good stewards of the land, and I think that's the issue. If we can stabilize at least that tonight, then I believe there are other, further opportunities for us to continue to address the issues of the lease and the issues of the use of the property.
But is it fair to the Fryes for us to sign, you know, agree to a five-year lease, knowing that maybe in a year or two we're just not going to fund it, and we want to turn into baseball fields? They invest in the cover crops, and they put the other money into that, into that property. And all along, our intention is, well, we'd rather have some ball fields there. We'd rather have more time to talk to Senator McCoskey and Ben Carden and see what else we can do with that, with that piece of property.
I think the important thing, there's already a master plan that was designed for the park that does carve out an area for recreation use. Now, obviously, citizens have spoken out, and they do want this to remain agriculture and nature. It is going to be a passive park. If that conversation does turn, I believe there's opportunity to allow the Fryes to do the farming. The property is a vast acreage of land, and there is a possibility of changing the use of the master plan. But again, I think that's a conversation for another time, and I do think there's an opportunity there to do both, if that's the administration's wishes and if we are able to obviously change the law as it is currently written.
And I would also point out that the present lease or proposed, the present lease and the proposed lease do, as Mr. Anthony pointed out, give the county the right to pull certain tracks out of the agricultural use, the farming use. And Sunrise and the Fryes are aware of that and agreeable to that.
And then how long have we had this proposed lease? When did you guys agree, when did the administration agree on, on the terms?
Early September, late August. Late August.
Late August. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions for me. And Mr. Anthony, you alluded to this in some of your comments about this administration has inherited this in some ways. But I remember a couple of years ago, I met with, with Mr. Frye, and he was expressing his concerns that he didn't have a long-term lease, and it was hard for him to engage in organic farming. And I'm not a farmer, but my understanding is, in order to effectively organic farm, it's a multi-year strategy because you're just not throwing pesticides and everything all around. You've got to build up the land and all that. Again, I'm not a farmer, just what I've been told. So now, fast forward two years later, my understanding is that he, at some point, because he didn't have a long-term lease, made a decision to no longer practice organic farming on the whole property. But now the new lease is coming back, or coming before us, the same owner, back to organic farming. So why, why didn't we just give him a long-term lease two years ago? I mean, I can't help but ask you. I'm sorry.
You know, that's a very good question, and one that I believe we tried to address for a lot of different reasons. It was kind of swept under the rug. I can't speak to exactly why the long-term lease--
Well, I know there was a change in, in the executive--
Yeah, a lot of things were going on at that time.
I know. I remember that time well.
That's correct. And you do, you are correct. And me personally, and I'm sure you're hearing from many folks in the audience that are more professional as far as the administering of an organic farm, but my belief is that if they would have secured that lease, it would have provided them a long-term opportunity for them to make the proper investments into the land. And there's quite, there's a possibility we wouldn't be here discussing organic versus conventional farming. So I do believe this is something that the council has an opportunity to make right today, something that should have happened years ago. And I am an advocate for that, since I was here, to at least provide some stability for the farm because it is something that our department, quite frankly, would not be able to manage.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question, I think, will probably go to Mr. Epps. But considering the discussion we just had about the future council or whomever deciding whether or not to fund this property in general and whether or not it would revert back to the federal government vis-à-vis the Navy, is there anything in the deed or any other provisions that, that would expressly prohibit the federal government from dispersing of the property? I mean, could it eventually be developed for residential homes or commercial use? Or is that attached all the way to the deed where nothing can happen?
The enacting legislation, this, this property has been treated differently than other federal property that would be under their normal disposal process. They have a disposal process similar to the county's. They want to dispose of real-- They want to dispose real, real...